Good evening. I call the September 8, 2020 meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to order. Thank you to those watching via livestream and those who are watching a recording of this meeting. To maintain the safety of town residents, staff, and the town council while following guidelines related to social distancing and limited public gatherings, this meeting is being facilitated electronically via Teams meeting. There are five town council members present tonight in council chambers and two participating remotely to ensure the proper distancing and room capacity directives are followed. All council members will be able to fully participate in this evening's work. Active citizen participation is always important to town council. Public comments were accepted from 9:00 a.m. through 3:00 p.m. today. This meeting is being streamed simultaneously on both the Town of Morrisville Facebook page and the Town of Morrisville website. On September 10, a video of this meeting will be uploaded to www.townofmorrisville.org/government/live-video. A link to this page will also be placed on the Town of Morrisville social media pages. Please visit www.townofmorrisville.org for updates regarding future town council meetings, or feel free to email townclerk@townofmorrisville.org with any questions. I now ask Eric Smith, our town clerk, to conduct a roll call of council members. Mr. Smith?
Mayor Colley?
Present.
Mayor Protam Johnson?
Present.
Councilmember Fender?
Present.
Councilmember Garamella?
Present.
Councilmember Rau?
Present.
Councilmember Robati?
Present.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Mayor, Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson indicated that she has not been able to connect. Eric, will you resend her an appointment request?
All councilors present with the exception of Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
Okay. Assistant manager Zuma, if you could let me know when she's connected and we'll recognize her.
Yes, sir. I'm trying to send something to her right now.
Thank you very much. I'll now recognize Councilmember Fender for tonight's invitation.
I'm going to read a Native American prayer. "O great spirit, whose voice I hear in the wind, whose breath gives life to all the world, hear me, I need your strength and wisdom. Let me walk in beauty and make my eyes ever behold the red and purple sunset. Make my hands respect the things you have made, and my ears sharp to hear your voice. Make me wise so that I may understand the things you have taught my people. Help me to remain calm and strong in the face of all that comes toward me. Let me learn the lessons you have hidden in every leaf and rock. Help me seek pure thoughts and act with the intention of helping others. Help me find compassion without empathy overwhelming me. I seek strength, not to be greater than my brother, but to fight my greatest enemy, myself. Make me always ready to come to you with clean hands and straight eyes, so when life fades as the fading sunset, my spirit may come to you without shame."
Thank you very much. All who are able, please stand and join in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prior to further action, I will ask if there is a motion and second to invoke Rule 19 so we can have remote participation. I recognize Councilmember Robati.
I move that we invoke Rule 19 for this session.
And I have a second from Councilmember Fender. If Town Clerk will please conduct a roll call of council members.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Rau?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Mayor Protam Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to invoke Rule 19 passes.
Thank you. Before we adopt tonight's agenda, Town Council policy is to review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda. Do any councilmembers have any such conflicts? Seeing or hearing none, is there a motion and a second to adopt this evening's agenda?
I make a motion that we adopt this evening's agenda.
I have a motion from Councilmember Rau, a second from Councilmember Fender. Town Clerk Smith will now facilitate a roll call vote.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Rau?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson? Mayor Protam Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
Motion to adopt the regular agenda passes.
We are now at Item 7, Consent Agenda. There are two items on the consent agenda this evening. A resolution and budget ordinance adjustment authorizing Davis Drive and Parkside Valley Drive intersection improvement construction contracts, and a budget ordinance amendment reappropriation of prior fiscal year 2020 funds. Is there a motion and a second to adopt tonight's consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve.
A motion from Mayor Protam.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Robati. Town Clerk Smith will now facilitate our roll call vote.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Rau?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson? Mayor Protam Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to adopt the consent agenda passes.
Thank you, sir. We are at Item 9, Presentations. There are three presentations tonight. A CAM model update, Year One, a Fire Department GAAP report, and strategic plan presentation, and a Morrisville Carpenter Road Improvement Project update. Fire Chief Scott Krittl and Police Chief Patrice Andrews will make the first presentation.
Good evening, y'all. We're here to talk tonight about our transition from CARRY 911, or to CARRY 911 from Raleigh-Wake. So you guys can remember, we spent significant amount of time working with Raleigh-Wake to try to improve some service that they were giving us, and at the end, we ended up making the switch. If you want to go to the next slide. Real quick, we'll look at a couple of the acronyms you guys see in there. CAM, obviously, is the CARRY, Apex, and Morrisville. PSAP is a Public Safety Answering Point. It's where 911 calls are answered. Raleigh-Wake Emergency Communications Center is a PSAP, so is CARRY Emergency Communications Center. They are PSAP. We'll go to the next slide. What was that? So, the goals of the PSAP transition was really, we felt that this was a really good way to improve outcomes for the citizens by reducing overall toll response time. This is also kind of, we rolled it out, it was just a matter of convenience, we were switching over to 911 center, and we instituted the CAM response model. Those are really two separate things. The CAM response model, as far as the fire department's concerned, is really the response of the closest available capable unit. So, no matter whether you're a resident of any one of those municipalities, the closest units that are capable of rendering aid go, and that, we all feel like that's just the best thing for the citizens, right? And being over on the same dispatch center really facilitates that and maximizes that because there's no call transferring. Another big deal for fire responses, moving over to CARRY 911 cut down on a lot of duplication of efforts. There was a lot of multiple units getting dispatched to the same type of call because they were being dispatched by two centers. Next slide. For the fire department, real quick, over the last year, starting, we went live on May 7 of 19. They dispatched us to 2,922 incidents. Usually, fire departments run more EMS, but we run just under 50% EMS. If you go to the next slide, the big deal, when we boiled this down, at least from the fire department's perspective, is that when we were with Raleigh-Wake, we were at the 90th percentile at 2 minutes and 14 seconds for call processing. Every second counts for us. Under the following year, after the go-live with CARRY, we went to a minute five at the 90th percentile. So we experienced the real-time data. That's why we wanted to go a year, let you guys get some look on, you know, what a year of experience with CARRY looks like. For us, it was a minute nine seconds we saved in response time overall, just in call processing alone. Some of this is the streamlining, maximizing the closest units' response, again minimizing the duplication of efforts. And what happens really with that is if a CARRY, or if one of our citizens picks up the phone and it goes to CARRY because of the self-system, CARRY could dispatch like three trucks and a battalion chief to a wreck, and then they transfer it, and not knowing that Raleigh was gonna, that had, we had units available, they would dispatch another full set, and you end up with six fire trucks and two battalion chiefs going to a wreck that only required half of that. So, there's some duplication of efforts that were happening when we were in different dispatch centers. But in addition, I think what we, what's hard to quantify is the fact that them not transferring calls really saves us more time. So, we did, we were able to analyze a nine-minute, or a one-minute nine-second improvement on call processing times, but what we don't capture, what we can't capture was if a caller hits a CARRY tower, and they're one of our citizens, and they were going to get a Morrisville fire truck, that call would be handled by the CARRY dispatcher, they would process part of it, and they would transfer it to Raleigh. Raleigh would finish the processing and dispatch Morrisville units. We skipped all those steps when we transitioned over to CARRY 911. So, for the fire department, it's a big deal. I think it's bigger for the fire department in the way we depend on mutual aid, the way we, you know, the way we give aid back and forth, and being on the same dispatch center is really a big deal, at least for the fire department. So, with that, I think that's all that I have, so I'm going to transition off to Chief Andrews, and I'm going to get out of the way.
Hey, good evening. All right, so I will pick up and I will echo a lot of what Chief Krittl just indicated with his presentation. As you know, Morrisville Fire and Morrisville Police, we work very close together, a lot of our procedures are very akin, so they're almost cousin-like. So for us, we both dispatched and self-initiated about a total of 39,000 calls. And, so 9,600 of those, as you'll see, were dispatched 911 calls for service. So, obviously, just to explain the difference is, that's when someone calls in and says, "I need help," or "we need this," or "please check on this." The self-initiated is more on an officer's side. So if an officer is doing his or her directed patrols, and they come across a car that just has its lights on, or lights out in a park, and it's dark, and there are people in it, then they're going to say, you know, "We're going to be out with a suspicious car." And so that's a self-initiated activity. Any traffic stop is a self-initiated activity. Anything that the officer does on his or her own is a self-initiated activity. Next slide, please. So, like Chief Krittl was saying, I'll echo that. We did notice a reduction in our average dispatch and response time. And so, for us, we want to look at, how much time does it take from the time that that call is received to the time that the call taker or the dispatcher sends an officer to respond? And then, how long does it take for that officer to pick that call up, get there on scene? All right? So we look at call, that whole, that whole stretch of time. And so, what we saw is, it was taking between 10 to 13 minutes for a dispatch. And then afterwards, it was taking between three to nine minutes. Once calls were dispatched to us, it was taking us about three minutes to respond, and then seven to 10 minutes for non-priority calls. So we saw a reduction in the time, a great reduction. So there, there were a few things that played into that. When you have communicators that aren't necessarily familiar with the geography of your town or your municipality, they have, and it's no fault of their own, sometimes they have trouble entering in the streets or getting the street information. So when you have a caller that's in a moment of stress, and they're trying to get that street, and you have a call taker that's not familiar with the area, that does cause a delay in, in time. All right? Also, too, when we had, you know, we didn't have AVL, the Automatic Vehicle Locator technology, so we've always had that equipped in our cars. Raleigh-Wake did not have that function available to us to utilize. So we've always had that, and, but they didn't have it where we could utilize it. So it was being utilized for Raleigh PD, but we were not able to utilize it. So CARRY, when we made the transition, CARRY said, "Hey, do you guys have AV, Automatic Vehicle Locator?" Well, yes, we do. And so it was just turning that switch on, and it was, you know, so basically, it's the closest car. So it may not necessarily be your beat, so if an officer is riding to lunch, and a call comes out, and that car picks up that location, it's the closest, then that's the car that's going to be dispatched. So it's really, has helped and aided us in, in getting to places faster, responding to calls quicker. Also, the transfer of calls, too. Next slide, please. So, as indicated, the transfer of calls, streamline call response. We are, we are seeing less and less what we saw before with Raleigh-Wake. So what we saw was, as what Chief Krittl indicated, it was a, you know, being bounced from one call center to the next. And that is, that was happening more times than we wanted it to. We know that every now and again, it may happen, just where the cell towers are, but now, what we're seeing is, it's happening significantly less than what had happened, what had been happening before. And so, we were also able to really align ourselves with CARRY's current protocol. We, our protocols were so much alike that it was, it was just a seamless transition. And so that makes the, the call taking, what kind of calls we're going to respond to, and the dispatching, easier. So anytime there's a protocol change in CARRY's, in CARRY's 911 center, they send that to us, and they automatically change it on our end. So it's just a, the communication is fantastic. And then, I mean, the best part about it, at least for, for me, and for Chief Desmond's and the officers, is that, you know, that our officers are able to work together very closely. You've seen that from doing traffic initiatives, but also here recently with campaigning visits, certain visits that we've had by dignitaries to the area. That was, that was, it was easy. It was very easy because our radios are programmed the same, we're able to speak to each other, and it just has worked a lot better. So obviously, with anything, there's going to be some challenges, but I'm happy to say that the challenge is something that we are working towards overcoming, and there is a light at the end of the tunnel. And at the end of it, it just has not, it hasn't had a detrimental effect on the services that we provide to our community. So this is more of a back end of the, of the house, inside the home, and that's our transition of our report management system. So, when an officer is dispatched to a call, they write a report most often, and, and then the, the report then is uploaded into the, a central repository. And so that's where we could investigate or see it and things like that. So, we have required third-party assistance to, to really transition our RMS system over to CARRY's report management system. Obviously, we're trying to be as aligned with them as possible, and, and so that transition has not gone as smoothly as we've wanted it to go, but it's technology and it's people. So, so we're, we're having to really be patient, and we're making progress. We are now complete and done with the iterations, so basically them, Central Square sending over different proofs for us to, to see of the program. And so we're done with that. So we've finally been able to get mugshots uploaded. So now we're trying to iron out some of the finite wrinkles and hoping that, that we will have a testing environment by the end of September, very early part of October. Until then, officers are, are, they're, they're being very patient, they're, they've had to write duplicate reports. And so currently, we're, we're still using Wake County for our report management system, and, and so they're having to repopulate reports twice into the report management system. It's a little bit easier for me to show you versus kind of telling you, but there's a duplication, and officers are working through it, they're doing very well with the accuracy of their reports, but we would, we would just like to not have them do that. So we're, we're moving there, we're going to get there. So I will, am I turning it back over to you, or is it me? Okay. Next slide. Okay, so, so our call volume, annual cost, so obviously, you know, one of the questions is cost, right? We always like to see that our cost, our call volume goes down, and, and our, our cost actually, you'll see a decrease in our costs. So that's, that's a good thing. And, and so at the end of it, what we, what we realize is that the amount of really great service that we are getting as customers of CARRY is phenomenal. You know, the, the constant communication, the decrease in call times, the decrease in, in repetitive response, we're seeing that, and it, and then we have where, where the actual costs are going down. So that's, that's a good thing. And so, that's it. Does, any questions? Turn it over.
Excellent. First, it's my understanding that Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson has joined us, so I just want to recognize her at this time. Sometimes during the presentation, she is able to connect. Welcome, Councilmember. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I had one quick question. Chief Krittl discussed CARRY, Apex, and Morrisville quite a bit. You talked about CARRY and Morrisville. Is Apex not part of your model?
So, for policing, not so much. The fire services are a bit different, although CARRY, Apex, and Morrisville are working collaboratively with each other on this system. There is an opportunity, you know, sometimes for our police services to overlap when we do operations together, and so we have done that, just primarily our interfaces with CARRY PD most of the time, just because of proximity of our two communities.
Okay. Looking around, not seeing Mayor Protam Johnson.
So I really, I don't have any questions. I just really have a comment and a big, huge kudos and thank you. It's fabulous when you bring us something and anticipate good results and promise to come back and give us a report and an update, and you've obviously done that, but your results are even far better than, than we all anticipated, I think. So I just want to say kudos and thank you, and keep it up, and hopefully, hopefully we'll see even more improvement as time goes down, goes along as well. So, thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Sounds like that's from all of us, so please let us know if there's anything else that you need for further support.
Mayor, I have a comment.
Okay. Councilmember Garamella, please.
Hey, Chief, thanks for this update. I have a couple of questions. Like, I know that we reduced one minute nine seconds, right? In, in the transfer of the calls, period. So do we know how much it was originally? Because all we are showing is the reduction of time, right? If you go back to those, one of those first slides, the one with the red, yes, this one, right? It says like, it shows an improvement in the call processing time. So, but do we know what it was before?
Yeah, it was, our, the call processing, which is actually, this, this number, the data here does not include any transfer from center to center. This is just once the center that's going to dispatch it initiates that call processing until they dispatch units. Previous, the previous year leading up to the switch over from Raleigh-Wake to CARRY, it was two minutes 14 seconds at the 90th percentile. And what we experienced from May 7 to May 6 of '20, under the CAM, or the CARRY Dispatch Center, was one minute five seconds at the 90th percentile.
Okay. All right. Okay, then my next question is, a couple of slides down, is regarding the self-initiated calls, right? This one. The self-initiated calls are 29,473, and on the slide below, it says every call they are charging, CARRY is charging by the slide, by the call, right? So is the self-initiated accounted for the dispatch? Because the numbers don't match up there. That's the reason I had a question on that.
Yeah. No, so that's a great question, and I'm actually glad you asked that. So, we are only being charged for the dispatch calls. So self-initiated calls are not reflected, are not being charged by CARRY. So CARRY does not charge us for those. It's only for anything coming into the 911 center by our community.
Okay. Because if, you know, like, the numbers didn't match, so that, this makes more sense. Okay. And, and the other question I had was regarding the priority calls versus non-priority calls. The end result of like, three to nine and seven to 10 is not a whole lot, right? Like, you know, so, why is that like that?
So, three to nine, you're asking, why is it, so?
Yeah, I meant to say, like, let me restate, like, I know for the fire department, I think it is seven minutes before they reach. So is there any standard for the Morrisville Fire Department that they, they have to abide by, you know, for getting their credentials, that they have to respond to a call within X number of minutes? So I, I did not know because, being in the Wake County Fire Commission, I know those numbers, I did not know what the police department has standards set for us.
So, so as far as the police department, there is not a set standard. The, the 911 center, so the communication center, has standard times for dispatch. So that's a part of their accreditation.
Okay. So, so we as a police department don't have, like, you know, within rural areas, like, you know, I'm just using example of the fire department, okay, it's like 10 minutes they can respond versus this one, so there's no categorization, it's pretty much like?
Correct. So there's a, there's a, there's a nationwide average for call response, for law enforcement call responses, but for us, your call response time will depend a lot on unit availability, and also where that unit could potentially be coming from. Because calls are dispatched according to one priority, but also, they're also dispatched as well if there is an officer available to dispatch. Otherwise, they'll go on what's called a run order, and so they'll dispatch, they'll look for officers that are available, and then if we don't have any officers available, they'll dispatch CARRY police.
Okay. Okay, this, this is helpful, because I just wondered if there is an active something going on, you know, how do they change their priorities? So that was my question. Okay, thanks, thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay.
I just have one question, just, I'm just curious, it's been very helpful. As we move towards, you know, open data and sharing data, would this data be available, like, in terms of just other departments or even citizens being able to get access to it? So, you know, because when I look at the number of calls, it'd be very interesting to see how those, what type of calls. So as we make, you know, as we start projecting where we need to make investments in fire or police, so I'm sure this is something that you're already doing, but I'm just curious what that process is like.
So this is a part of standard public records law? So what type of calls we're responding to, what is the response time? That's a public records request. Now, you know, it, as you know, public records request, if the, if the actual report doesn't exist, we are not bound to create that report. However, a resident can request how many disturbances you went on and that type of thing, and there, and it's relatively easy to pull that information. So it's available now, it's just a matter of asking for it.
Thank you. And there's something on our website as well. That neighbor-
we are not bound to create that report. However, a resident can request how many disturbances you went on and that type of thing. And it's relatively easy to pull that information. So it's available now. It's just a matter of asking for it.
Thank you.
And there's something on our website as well. That neighbors can check on their area within a mile.
So that's, yes. So that is our crime mapping system. So those track calls that a report is created for, or a call for service. So that can track. But they can also ask for, request that spreadsheet, too.
So there is some open data out there already. Okay. Excellent. Thank you both for that report. We'll move on to item 9B. If Chief Kittle could stay there, he's going to present the fire department gap report and strategic plan. Thank you, Chief Andrews.
You're welcome. All right. All right, so it's been a while. I've been trying to get this one out to, you know, the accreditation model that we go through, they do improvements, self-improvements. And every five years, when we go through, we have new things we've got to stand up. And when we, when we went to go from fifth to sixth edition, or eighth to ninth edition, we ended up picking up a couple of requirements that are based on transparency. And a lot of that had to do with us getting documents to you. And this is, we needed to do it in a way that could be documented so that we could prove that we're doing the things that we say we're doing for the accreditation. So we are presenting to you the gap report and our strategic plan. Neither are brand-new documents. We gave the gap report a test run last year. This year, we refined it and it's making it to the finish line. The strategic plan has been done for a little while. But anyway, to talk about the primary ideas behind the gap report, really is mainly to identify any gaps between what we're experiencing in practice and what we say we're doing in our standards of cover. We want to communicate that to our stakeholders in an open way. And it really turns into a report card of sorts. We want to kind of state how we're doing against the statements that we make for our performance objectives. I'll go to the next slide. Our gap report will list the equipment, the staffing, capabilities, and performance objectives. And I'll talk about those in just a second. But we perform a detailed data analysis on our experienced calls, the data from that, and we report how we are measuring up against our stated performance objectives. Then, this gap report's going to focus on three primary areas. Capacity, capability, and performance. The capacity is really our ability to do work. So like, how many of this type of call could we handle with our resources? Capability. We are technical rescue certified in vehicle execution, but we do not do technician-level hazmat. That's not a service that we provide. So the gap report will talk to our ability to do the programs that we say that we're going to do. And then performance is really basically like the standards everybody's talking about that we try to put forward in our standards of cover. And that's really where we do the, like, five-minute, 12-second drive time, 90% of the time, first do, and all those different ones that we have in our standards of cover. So the, next slide. The real driver is to improve transparency and directly inform the council, management, citizens of our performance, remind stakeholders of what our capabilities are and our performance objectives. And then this gap report really addresses several key elements of our accreditation process and demonstrating our ability to get this performance to the council, to the management. Go to the next slide. So the challenges with the gap report, one of the things that we constantly see when we're doing the accreditation thing is we're always looking for improvement. And one of the things that the accreditation process does for us is force us to look at things we're not doing very well. And one of the things that we will see as a result of this process is that we're not getting the standards of cover in front of the decision-makers often enough, so that everybody's familiar with it. So the last real working document we had of that is really a 2015 version. And a lot's happened since 2015. So if we go to the next slide, you kind of look at our fire department in 2015, and it looked like that. You're talking about an engine was out of station one with four. We had a ladder truck at station two and a squad with two people on it and a battalion chief, and then three people on the pumper. If you go to the next slide. Now, after the advancements we've made since then, we have a ladder truck at station one with four, a rescue at station one that is routinely, minimally staffed with three, four on the ladder at two. If we're at full staff right now, we can run a squad out of station two, which protects the ladder from running quite so many calls, running the miles. And then 23 still sitting out there with three people, and then a battalion chief. So when we do the gap report, basically, the gap report is supposed to be generated based on the last time the council seen or we produced a standard of cover. So we produced a standard that was based on 2015, and we reported based on our current performance. So that's the hole or the challenge with this gap report. The gap report, or our strategic, or our standards of cover are in the process of being completely reworked. And it'll be reworked. We should have it out in the next two, three months. And it will be reflective of our current capabilities. And our next gap report would be really true to the current staffing, equipment level, service levels that we can provide in actuality. So we'll go to the next slide. This should be the last year we produce a gap report that's not based on real-time performance objectives. And we look forward to the, getting our standards of cover out to you. We would hope that we could work on, you know, the NFPA 1710 puts forward that they'd like everybody responding in four minutes with the first do apparatus. That's not possible in our response model yet. We'd like to lower our goal just a little bit from 5:12 to five minutes. It's similar with our neighbors. We'd like that to be included in our next standards of cover. It's a small improvement, but we live on small improvements. And this report is not currently available on the website, but it will be. It will be for that very same reason, for transparency, to make sure that everybody's got access to it. But in this case, it was provided with this briefing. Our 2019, 2020 to 2024 strategic plan was facilitated by the Center for Public Safety Excellence and their technical assistance program. We call it the TAP team. They came out to help us draft this document. They are also facilitating the standards of cover revision with us. It was developed using considerable external and internal stakeholder input. Strategic plan, our strategic plan covers six goals and 25 objectives. And if you go to the next slide, this is an example, and really, the reason this was put in here was to kind of illustrate to you that the entire strategic plan, the entire fire department strategic plan was designed to support Connect-Morrisville strategic plan. So if you look at each of our objectives, for example, the one on the screen, you'll see that that objective was deemed to be in support of objective 3.1, 4.1, 4.3, 4.4, 5.2 of Connect-Morrisville. So it was important, you know, when Chief Wright was here, that he wanted those two plans to align. We got started on a strategic, we've had a strategic plan for years. But we started this process after Connect-Morrisville was in process, and it was important to them that they all meshed. And we believe we've created a document that does that while still addressing true needs inside the fire department. So we're happy with those documents. They're both available to you now. You should have access to them, and they'll both be available on the town, on the fire department's website when we get that reconstructed. And I'll entertain any questions.
Excellent. I appreciate the steps being taken for openness and transparency and being undertaken, and your underlying value of continuous improvement, which is throughout these documents. So that's really wonderful. Any other questions or comments? I'll recognize Councilmember Fender.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions with regards to the gap report and some of the data in there. Under fire suppression response objectives, and it gives, you know, what your results were. What is, okay, so there's four bullets. The first is, for 90% of fire responses to urban areas, the first do apparatus shall arrive within seven minutes, 20 seconds. And then the third bullet is, for 90% of moderate-risk fire responses to urban areas, the full initial assignment arrives within 11 minutes, 20 seconds. Because I have two questions there. What defines moderate risk? And then, and with the result, it says N equals 2. So does that mean you only had two instances that were defined as moderate risk?
Yes. So with all, in the CIPSY model, all of our calls, we break down into categories. So there's disciplines, you're referring to structural fires. And then inside of that, we have a moderate risk, which would be, say, your regular two, you know, two-story, single-family structure. And then we would go to elevated risk, which would be your apartment complex. And then you end up with a maximum risk where you're at a, maybe a assisted-living facility where, in addition to the fire problem, we have a huge, we've got to get people evacuated. And what happens is, that level of risk determines the number of people that we would dispatch initially. So on a moderate risk, we would be looking at our initial dispatch, you know, without having the report in front of me, I believe that number right now is at 23. We would go to 26 and then 46 for maximum. So if you get that call at a structure that indicates it's a maximum risk, they'll be lighting off enough fire trucks to send 45 people to the scene, or it might be 36 in the CAM model. But the level of risk indicates how many staff members will be dispatched.
So do you not have goals for the, for the two after moderate, the extreme?
Currently, currently, we don't. Because, to be honest with you, we don't have enough examples of being able to deliver that number of people. Now, with the new CAM model, we have a much, we have a much better ability to do that much quicker, because we have a lot more help closer. So because the number of responding personnel is higher, our system will give us longer to stack that number of people on the scene.
Okay. Thank you.
Do any remote participants have any comments or questions? Okay. I just want to say, the safety of our stakeholders is one of our highest priorities as town leaders. So your frequent communication of progress and needs will be integral to the success of this effort, and we look forward to continue to support you, especially as you move towards the quint. I know that's been something you've been trying to do for years. So thank you very much for your ongoing efforts.
Thank you.
Mark Spagnoli, our town engineer, will now provide a Morrisville Carpenter Road Improvement Project update.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilmembers, Mark Spagnoli, town engineer. It's a pleasure to be here this evening, and it's the first time at the podium, so it's a new process for me.
Welcome.
Thank you. Tonight, we have a brief presentation for the Morrisville Carpenter Roadway Improvement Project. As you know, we're just restarting the project. The DOT had postponed the project because of funding issues back in May, so we're back on the books now, and we're moving forward, just a reminder of that. And, you know, we know you have a lot of questions, and we may not be able to answer them all this evening, so if there's anything that we can't answer, feel free to email them to us, and we'll get back to those right away after the meeting. So let's go ahead and get started. So just a brief history and background. The project started originally in November of 2015. This was well before my time here at Morrisville, but it's a long time coming, and we're certainly ready to rock and roll now. The town selected Kimley Horn as a consulting engineering firm to spearhead the design of this project. We had numerous public meetings in, over the years, between 2016 and 2018. The town received lap funding through Campo and NC DOT of $6.3 million towards this project, which equates to about 70% of the construction cost for the project. We've had numerous council updates over the years. We started utility relocations back in 2019. So there has been some construction activity, starting last year, and we recently completed those utility relocations. And we just started the rebidding, started this weekend for the project. So the project is officially out to bid now. We were postponed back in May, when we were about to do the bidding, and now we're back online. Just a quick budget overview. We have a couple of different funding sources. Again, Campo, we received a grant for $6.3 million. We spent to date, including designing utility relocations, approximately $2.8 million. And we have about $8.8 million available now for construction and construction administration over the next year or so. This is in line with our current estimates, so we're in pretty good shape there. So to dive right into the details, I'm sure mostly you're aware of the project. It's between Davis Drive and Chapel Hill Road, and encompasses about 1.3-mile stretch of roadway. Generally, talking about the scope of work for the project, we're widening the road from two lanes to four lanes. There's going to be a center landscape median throughout the project corridor. The sidewalks that currently terminate about Old Savannah will continue, so there'll be sidewalks on both sides of the road throughout the project from Davis to Chapel Hill. We have a new greenway connection at Town Hall Drive to the Crabtree Greenway. There's major intersection improvements at Town Hall Drive that provide new connection to Franklin Upchurch Road and different turning movements there. There'll be new paving and striping throughout the project corridor. And the real, the primary goals of this project are really to reduce congestion, improve vehicle and pedestrian safety, and to beautify the corridor. I see this road as a road that's going to end up looking a lot like Morrisville Parkway. You'll have the center median, the four lanes, and sidewalk on each side. So it's a good example of the way it will look like when it's completed. Just to dive down a little further into the details, and here, we've broken up the project into two halves. The western half, we can see some of the improvements. You can see where the green, the green area is the new landscape median that's not there today. This section of road has pretty much already been widened. There won't be additional paving happening here. This is primarily where we're going to be constructing the landscape medians and restriping the, and repaving the entire roadway in this section. The safety enhancements here, because of the medians, you're going to be reducing the potential for any head-on collisions. The speed limits here are going to remain 35, just as they are today. And you'll have new streetlights, and again, the sidewalks will continue on both sides. Now, going into the eastern half is where we have a lot of the improvements. Everything you see in blue is where we're going to be doing the roadway widening work. This is major construction work. It's primarily from about Old Savannah Drive heading east to Chapel Hill Road. There's major widening there. There's going to be a new intersection created at Morrisville Square and the new Thornbury Entrance, so that's not there today. You'll have the widening of Town Hall Drive, and Town Hall Drive, when you exit Town Hall Drive onto Morrisville Carpenter, you'll have two left-turning lanes, a straight lane, and then a right-turn lane there that doesn't exist today. Again, the new center medians are indicated in green. The sidewalks that are not here today will extend all the way to Chapel Hill, streetlights, and the new greenway connector at Town Hall Drive. So as part of our vehicle safety enhancements, there will be some turning movements that change. And you may be aware of this. This map shows you those turning movements. And what they mean by FM is full movement, that those intersections, folks will be able to make lefts and rights in and out of those intersections. Where it says R-I-R-O, that's right-in, right-out only. And just to be clear, the full movement intersections are at Allanani Street, Wrangland Street, Leafy Creek, Madras Lane, Gradiot Millage Drive, Old Savannah Drive, Orianna Drive, the new intersection at Thornbury and Morrisville Square, and obviously, at Town Hall Drive. The remaining intersections will be restricted to a right-in, right-out only. So our current status and upcoming activities, like I said, we're out to bid right now. The bids are expected to come in on September 29th. That'll be followed up with a review by the town staff, and then we'll have to come to council or contract award. We have a final review by the NC DOT before we execute the contract with the contractor, and our notice to proceed is anticipated to happen in January. So what will folks expect when they start the January New Year and they're coming down the road? There's certainly, between Old Savannah and Chapel Hill, there'll be a lot of construction activities happening there. There'll be your cones and barrels and traffic control devices put in. You'll see erosion control measures, your silt fences, your orange fences. There will be some intermittent road closures, but primarily, the corridor is meant to stay Uh, but primarily, the, the corridor is meant to stay open with two lanes to travel at all times. Um, so that, that's, that's our number one goal. And, uh, the first couple of phases of the project are surrounding that area near Town Hall Drive. When you get into Phase 3, will be where we construct all of the medians themselves. So we certainly are gonna be providing communications and outreach throughout the project's time. We have, um, obviously, we're gonna be giving public and council updates on a regular basis. We're gonna have construction signage. We've updated our webpage just recently. We sent out direct mailers to the HOA and some of the area businesses. Um, we're scheduling HOA meetings to, to give people further details about the project. And, uh, we're also doing social media blasts and updates. And that's it. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
As you noted, this has been a long time coming. We really appreciate the ongoing efforts and, uh, being able to partner with DOT. And we're fronting some money for that.
Yes.
And, uh, as you bring the contracts back, that's when a lot of the questions will happen as we move towards contract. Um, one thing I wanna make sure that we're aware of and do our best is to make sure that we have greenway connectivity.
Yes.
North-south.
Very important.
Project, if possible. I know it's gonna be tough to keep those things viable, so that's one concern I had. I'll now recognize council members and Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, do you have something to, or no?
Yes, I have several questions, Mayor. For full transparency, for the council and of course, the audience, um, I live in one of the communities that is adjacent to Morrisville Carpenter Road. And also councilmember Steve Rowell is also, um, his community is adjacent to Morrisville Carpenter Road. So I actually have been following this project since before I was on council, um, in 2010, 2011, and just watching how things progressed. Um, we have tried and tried and tried as a town to get this road improved all the way from 54 to Davis Drive for many, many years. And we were able to get it from Savannah to Davis Drive, at least expanded the proper width. But there was some federal interpretation of noise standards that actually is the reason it's only striped for two lanes today. So, uh, it's, it's a very interesting project. The questions I have for you, um, and I know you haven't had a lot of history, so I'll, I'll, um, be kind. The crosswalks, um, that we have currently, there is one that is somewhat offset by Savannah. And that intersection is supposed to be a full movement intersection. Did you have, um, any information on where that crosswalk was gonna move? Is that gonna just move down a little bit to a safer area? Is that gonna stay in its present position?
Hello, councilmember, yes, the, uh, the crosswalk at Old Savannah is staying in that, at that location. That's what's proposed in the plans today.
Okay, that's, that's helpful. I know there was some, I, I'm not sure how full movement would change with the median design and everything. So that's helpful. A lot of people have been asking about that. Um, I have had some questions from some residents about the recent redesign of the Morrisville Community Park. There's apparently, um, some amenities that would be accessible by going, uh, through the Carpenter Park community. And, um, like the tennis courts and maybe some other amenities. You can go back there now and access, um, the area by the, um, the soccer field and the baseball field. But there's been no official signage. And they were wondering, is, number one, has there been any analysis done or any consideration for that potential increase in traffic through that neighborhood in that area? And two, is there any plans to maybe add some signage? So, um, as the community park gets, um, completed, people will become aware of other access points for the park?
Uh, yes, councilmember. So, um, we're actually working very closely with the Parks Department on the, uh, on the design of the tennis courts at the Morrisville Community Park. Um, those are at the very early stages of, of design now. Um, I don't think we've officially taken any vehicle, proposed vehicle trips, uh, for the tennis courts. But, but based on my, uh, professional experience and the number of courts that are gonna be there and the number of players that you have on a tennis court, um, I don't think there's gonna be any type of detriment to the in-and-out on Coodra Lane and running through the Carpenter Park community. Uh, but we can certainly, certainly look into that further to make sure that it doesn't impact them in any negative way. Uh, and, and in terms of signage, uh, those, those have been background conversations. I think since we're still at the very early stages of the design of the tennis courts, I, I'm not sure if we are, are at, at the point of proposing signs just yet.
Of course, but of cour-, this is something I'll be saying again in a couple of months. And just, just be ready for Vicky's asking about signs again. Um, because we have some great wayfinding signs throughout the town. And so this would just be another opportunity. And finally, um, the right-in, right-out is a sore spot for a lot of residents because now we enjoy the full movement. And in consideration with safety, medians were introduced to help people move traffic, uh, the most efficiently. But what has happened is there's communities like, um, the Misty Groves, um, community, as well as Savannah on the, um, south side of the road only have one access point for the community and that is directly onto Morrisville Carpenter Road. Um, Savannah does have full movement, but Misty Groves only has right-in, right-out. With that said, is there a recommendation about how Misty Groves residents can get in and out of their community from the shortest path that is safe? So if you want, if today, um, they can take a left-hand turn off of Morrisville Carpenter Road into their community. However, with the new design, they can, they have to go past their community, somehow turn around and then enter it from the right-hand turn. So just wanting to understand better, um, for these communities to have the right-in, right-out, what can they expect and, and how do we, um, work with them to make sure that it, um, is clear and is a safe way to do so?
Right, so, um, the current proposal for Misty Grove would be that they would exit, uh, right, right-hand out and they would, uh, be required to, um, head eastbound and make a U-turn at the new intersection of, uh, Thornbury and, uh, Morrisville Square. Um, if they wanted to head west on, on, uh, Morrisville Carpenter. That, that's, that's the way the plans have been designed. Uh, the primary reason for that is that, uh, the DOT has specific requirements of, uh, intersection spacing. So, um, um, they wouldn't allow a, a full turning movement intersection, uh, so close together. Uh, so that, that's why that was designed that way.
And is that also because that the road, when a road becomes a four-lane road, there's stricter requirements for those movements versus if the road is only a two-lane road, there's less strict, um, requirements for full movement?
Um.
Cause this is, this is originally designed for a two-lane road and now we have a four-lane road and now we're closing down access?
Uh, that's a good question. Uh, I guess one would say yes, once, uh, once a median is introduced to a four-lane roadway, uh, you have, uh, different requirements and restrictions. Yeah, that, that, that is a good point.
Okay. Um, and, uh, when do you expect to be scheduling the community meetings? Whether they're Zoom meetings because of all the social distancing? Um, farmers market's always possible, but to go actually to the HOA and, and the residents, it might be easier to do, you know, virtual meetings to get more people, um, engaged?
Yeah, so we are actually working on scheduling those now. Um, I'm working, our engineering's working with the Communications Department, uh, to come up with a strategy. And we're probably likely gonna do some of them or all of them via some type of, uh, a web meeting. And, uh, those are gonna be happening in the very near future, uh, certainly before the end of the calendar year.
Great, so just count me in as someone that can help with, um, the Savannah community. And I'm sure Steve could help with Richmond, but, you know, I'm flexible on other, um, support along that corridor as well.
Oh, that'd be great. Thank you so much for the help.
Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry I took up so much time, but this has been, uh, a labor of love just working on this, um, Morrisville Carpenter Road project, so thank you.
Now recognize councilmember Boddy, followed by councilmember Rowell, please.
Hey, Mark.
Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So I appreciate the fact that you intend to keep two lanes open throughout most of the project. And I understand that you're gonna be doing social media posts and all these other, you know, outreach and notifications, but I, I think that it's worth putting some time into thinking about maybe some type of text notifications.
Okay.
About closures in this area. The reason being that I, I'm a little wor-, well, I mean, I'm half worried and half really, really hopeful that, um, traffic on Morrisville Carpenter Road may be back to the horror that it was pre-COVID by January 2021, when the project commences. So I just think that, um, you know, that the, honestly, like if I don't get a text message about something, I don't know that it happened. So I'm just thinking that that's something that we might wanna put, you know, put some thought into. And I think that that would be a really good way to keep people, to keep, get people notified immediately in the situation before they take off for work and they can reroute themselves.
That sounds like a great idea. Thank you.
That's all, thank you.
Excellent. Councilmember Rowell?
Um, thank you. Uh, councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, uh, raised most, almost all the points I was gonna raise. Uh, the only one, um, that I, and I know what the answer is, but some of my neighbors are just really concerned of the fact that when you're gonna, when, when this project is done and you've got four lanes, how, you know, you wouldn't be able to have like a traffic light to take a left out because there's gonna be more cars. But the DOT has continued to come back and said that there's studies that show that there just isn't any evidence to need that. So I don't know if that's something that we can continue to look at if the traffic flow does increase, where we could have DOT come back and do some kind of analysis.
Yeah, we certainly can. I mean, if, as vehicle trips increase there over time, uh, we can reevaluate that and see if a signal is necessary.
Now, as a follow-up, and I just think that outreach, thank you for the letter that you all sent to the HOAs. And I think just whatever I can do to help with facilitating more of these community meetings, whether it's through Zoom or eventually in-person, if it can be done, but we don't know. But I think that's the key is we just don't, before you know it, January's gonna be here and we don't want people to wake up and then all this, what happened? I know that's not gonna happen, but I think just a full-blown PR approach with communications, with the staff, with your department, would just be ideal to get the word out. And I know that's already happening, but thank you for doing that.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, please.
So I just wanted to, um, reiterate what councilmember Row Boddy said about keeping the road open as best as we can. And you mentioned that, Mark, in your presentation, but, um, just wanna reiterate how important that is. And I know you all know that. You know, this is a very important artery, not just for, um, Morrisville residents, but the Cary residents that come through here daily, uh, on their commute to 40 or the airport. So, um, so thank you for keeping that, uh, uh, in mind. And the only other comment I have is, um, you know, DOT, um, can put a hold on, on everything here for, for quite some time. And now that they have reactivated this project, um, I, I'm just really thrilled that you all moved as quickly as you did, that it's already out to bid and that we're gonna have, um, the bid openings at the end of the month. And, and we're gonna move this project along just as quickly as we can cause unfortunately, it's hit a lot of roadblocks over the years. And, um, so I, I just wanna commend you on moving as quickly, um, right now and just keep that in mind as we go through this project.
I will. It's a team, it's a team on our end.
Yeah, well, and, and we all know that, um, um, there are many things that are out of our control too. Um, so I, I anticipate there'll be a couple more roadblocks along the next couple of months. But, um, but thank you for moving as quickly as you have, um, right now.
Thank you.
Councilmember Garamella, please. Councilmember Garamella?
Okay, sorry, I was talking on mute. Um, thanks, uh, Mayor. Uh, Mark, I, I echo the same, uh, sentiments that Liz is talking about, that, uh, this project, you know, it was long due and we thought we got it and then they took it away and then we again got it. So, um, the quickly that we put in, you know, is the better for us. Um, otherwise, you know, uh, we just won't get an opportunity. And also wanted to ask, I don't know if this was answered before. Um, I know, um, the staff came to us with the request that we pay for this and, uh, we, you know, um, the reimbursement method, is that one year after? Or did they, uh, was that as part of the criteria for rewarding us? Or was they didn't even care for that anymore? Something if, uh, Martha can answer.
Thank you, councilmember Garamella. Uh, we don't know who else made requests similar to ours or what they asked for. We do know that they put all of those projects sort of in a pot. And our notification letter actually was more favorable than what we offered to NC DOT to defer reimbursement for a year. They are going to allow us to, uh, request reimbursement, I'll say for approximately half of the 6.3 right away. And then the other part is deferred till August of 2021. And as Mark's calculated up, that may matter little to us as that project goes forward. So that is what we know, that the repayment, uh, terms are actually more favorable than what we offered to them. So we are grateful for that.
Okay, thanks. That's, that's good to hear. So that was, I was just, had a question about it. Thank you, and looking forward for this project.
Thank you. If we could go to slide eight real quick, I have one quick question. Eight. So looking down in the legend, there's the LO for leftover access. It's my understanding in the past, that was being considered at some places, but I don't see any indication of it anymore. So I guess as we get to contract stage, if there's any opportunity to add those back in or something? Cause U-turns are inherently dangerous, leftovers might be a little safer.
Yes.
Um, so that's just a thought to keep in mind. If anyone else has any other questions or concerns or suggestions, please get them to Mark. As the contracts come back in, they'll be in negotiation with these different contractors and, uh, consults. And that'll be a time where decisions are being made. So sooner we give him the info he needs to make a good decision on our behalf. Mr. Spagnoli, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You paved the ground running. Well done.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Okay, we're now at item 10, public comment. Town Clerk Smith will now present any public comments received.
Thank you. We received one public comment from Cindy Hakim, 1000 Otney Ridge Lane, Morrisville, North Carolina. Hello, I am a Morrisville, North Carolina resident and I am very concerned about all the apartment buildings going up, especially at the Aviation Parkway and McCrimmon Parkway intersection and any future developments. Morrisville is beautiful with greenways and open space. I know that greenways and open space don't generate revenue for the town like an apartment building, but I thought our town wasn't all about that. It's heartbreaking to see all this development, either for another apartment building or another grocery store. Our school system cannot handle more residents. We don't have the structures to educate the youth already in Morrisville, but we are adding more housing. Our streets aren't developed for more residents. Traffic will become an even bigger issue if we continue to develop more housing. Please stop developing and upzoning in Morrisville. All comments received were provided to council in their entirety and will be added to the public record.
Thank you, sir. We're now at item 11, action items. There are two action items on tonight's agenda. A second reading on ordinance 2019-255-0, approving a zoning map amendment for 101 Holly Creek Road, and a resolution authorizing the purchase of real property, approximately 2.5 acres, to be subdivided from the tract at 10908 Chapel Hill Road. Chris Lawson, Planner 2, will facilitate the first item. Council was previously briefed on this item at their March 10th and July 28th meetings, and a public hearing was held on July 28th and August 11th. Council failed to reach a supermajority vote on the ordinance during the previous August 25th vote. A vote is asked to take action on the ordinance, ordinance again tonight. Mr. Lawson?
Thank you, counsel. Uh, like you just said, your last meeting, the ordinance did not receive the supermajority vote required for approval on the first reading. Um, I have no updates. Um, tonight, you're asked to take action, uh, once again. I am open for questions and then the applicants are, um, here this night as well. Thank you.
Okay. Do any councilmembers have any questions or comments of the applicant or staff?
Um, just a.
Councilmember Rowell?
Um, yeah, before we wrote on this, I just wanted. Yeah, before we wrote on this, I just wanted to thank all the applicant and the citizens who weighed in on their concerns. And, you know, just to be transparent with the public, I just want them to know that I'm in favor of this at this time because of the fact that we worked hard to get no residential permitted, the fact that a school isn't being considered at this time, the value of the medical office buildings, which I think is good during a pandemic, but also the economic development. The applicant shared with me that we'll probably get about $160,000 of property tax revenue, about $62,000 coming to Morrisville. With that being said, I am hearing everyone and I just want the public to know that I'm not looking at this as, you know, one parcel that's gone NAC and then, you know, the rest, you know, even though what's with land use plan is recommending. So if there had been multifamily as part of this, I would not have approved this. So, but I just want to thank the amount of work that's gone into the process and, you know, thank the public for engaging and sharing their concerns. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I shared my thoughts at our last meeting and my discussions on the topic since then have not swayed how much I value the importance of listening to our residents and their opposition to upzoning lower-density residential parcels before we have had the opportunity to meet the infrastructure needs of our community. And I understand there are other perspectives in regards to the pros and cons of this request by the applicant. And if the upzoning is to occur, I'd request that my colleagues consider adding the condition that the right turn lane from Morrisville Carpenter Road onto Davis Drive, it's, the packet currently lists this as a PIL contribution, and the Morrisville Carpenter Road widening both be constructed before the construction begins. And in that way, at least the basic road infrastructure on our adopted transportation plan, if nothing else, is in place before this development adds to our traffic challenges. So do any council members have any reaction to that? I recognize Councilmember.
Mayor, could you, could you clarify what you asked for for PIL? Because there is a right turn lane from Morrisville Carpenter to Davis today.
Yeah, that's PIL contribution as listed in the conditions. So I'd rather have that actually be built before this construction happens because it happens sometimes that we collect PIL and then the actual road improvement doesn't happen for years later. And it's my thought that since our road infrastructure is behind where we would like it to be, it'd be good to start getting some of this done before the construction happens. Does that answer your question, Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson?
I understand your concern. I may or may not agree with it, but I appreciate you clarifying. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other comments on that, do any other council members have any comments on this issue? Councilmember Fender?
I have a question with regards to the letter as part of the package from Mr. Johnson. It's labeled the wildlife letter, where he states that, that before draining the pond, the fish could be netted and relocated. So what kind of assurances would we have that will actually be done? What, is it part of the ordinance or permitting process or?
That'd be up to the town.
Pardon me?
That'll be up to the town to tell me what's sufficient for them. My word is good enough for me, but it depends on what, what notations on a plan or something like that.
So could it be incorporated in the site plan?
I think so.
So that would be, that would be an added condition?
Yeah.
An adjusted gentleman's agreement that it will be done?
I think there are several ways to go about it. I think one way would be to add a condition. I think another way would be to, gentleman's agreement, like you said, I think it's up to council and the applicants.
Hi, Brandon Moore with the site group. We could add a note to the plan requiring the contractor to net the fish before, and relocate the fish before approval or before, I guess it would be before CO is how you would tie that to the inspections of the project so that they could verify that that happens before. And I assume there would be some kind of penalty if it wasn't done. A zoning, some, some sort of zoning violation, if it was on the plan and it wasn't done before.
I'd like the town attorney to help me sort through this one. I don't know if we have just some sort of verbal agreement. Would that be legally, would we be able to hold them to that without a condition?
I'm reading and thinking as we're going here. I note on the proposed rezoning ordinance that one of the conditions is that development will be in substantial conformance with the sketch plan, which is an exhibit. And perhaps we could make a note on that sketch plan. But then you would carry forward into the site plan. That would be your measuring stick for the site plan?
Yeah, I agree with that. I like that.
I mean, it doesn't really fit to me as a condition of the rezoning, but more a condition of the development of the site.
Would that be acceptable to you, Councilmember Fender?
Yeah, if it works.
Is, does anyone on the council have a problem with us having that move forward in that way?
No, but I'll, I'll make a comment just for, for process. Doing these things on the fly at the last minute is, we make mistakes when we do that. So I'm not opposed to it, but I, I would, we've talked about this project for months. And we even talked about this issue last week. And I even made the comment and asked, were we all satisfied? So I would just say for, just this is a process thing, that we try not to do this on the fly. Again, because I think we make mistakes when we do that. And so I would say, please, out of courtesy for the applicant, out of courtesy for our staff, out of courtesy for each other, that we try to do this with a little more notice than, than us sitting here at a council meeting. I realize that's not always possible. I realize that. But I, that's a process thing that I think will make us more efficient as we're moving forward. And having said that, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, I think we have a couple of comments first, so if you could hold the motion, please.
Well, I'd just like to make comment, I'm trying to get to a yes. And so I think it's important for us to remain flexible and nimble.
Right, I think it's important to do it right. And we could always postpone a vote if people aren't comfortable, so not looking to do that. Councilmember Rao?
Yeah, I mean, for me, I just think that from a process perspective, it's a lot easier to get these kinds of conditions earlier in the process. I do like the idea of investment in road construction versus PIL because I have seen that be a challenge. But I just don't know, you know, Town Attorney Gray, when we make a change like that, I mean, other developments we've approved, just requiring PIL, some I think we've approved with construction costs, right? So I just don't know, we even know what that number is of what it would cost to do the construction lane. That's my only concern. Are we being fair in the process to the applicant? When we make that kind of a request? And then the other condition you're saying is that we would, what is the, I want to ask the applicant, what is the timeline of your project if this were to be approved? To address the concern the mayor brought up about traffic?
I think that we're going to have a fairly lengthy project in just getting through site plan approval. Typically, that's many months. Take that off. Typically, that's, that's many months. And we'll be pre-leasing during that progress, you know, the progress of that. So I'd be surprised if we could break ground before mid to third quarter of next year, 2021. My best guess. And that depends, again, issues we run into, site plan approval. DOT, I know, is behind as well, so that might.
I had some, Matthew Carpenter, attorney at Matt's Law Firm. Brandon, correct me if I'm wrong, but that condition will ensure that we pay the payment in lieu, but it doesn't prevent staff in the site plan stage from saying that we should build it as part of our project, right?
That's what I was trying to ask.
Right.
All right, and we're talking about the, the right turn from Morrisville Carpenter.
On to Davis Drive.
So the way that was handled in, through the staff reviews is, we contribute very little to that. And the amount that we're, we're, as far as the, the turning movements. And they figured out the cost of the right turn lane and we had a proportional allocation based on our number of anticipated trips. The, the total turn lane there is something that's really beyond our control because of just how, how small our traffic impact is there. And so to try to, to, you know, be fair about it and, and pay our fair share, we've offered the fee in lieu. So that's, that's kind of how we viewed our responsibility at that, that intersection. But we do have, the major road improvements with this are going to be along Davis Drive, which is a very, very significant design task and expenditure. That's probably going to be, what's going to be a big factor in determining how long the sign of the project will take.
And to be clear, the, the lane already exists. The right turn lane already exists.
Yes.
Yeah, the right turn lane is there now. This is, this is in place today. It's not that it doesn't exist. That's what I think Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson was trying to get at as well.
So to clarify, there's no new lane in addition to the existing?
So, so currently, there are, there is a right turn lane. This would actually expand asphalt farther right to create a separate dedicated right turn lane. I, I think these applicants, as part of their TIA, were asked to contribute just over $2,300. We do have some other funding for that. Generally, the way it works is we pull the PIL and we have, you know, close to 100% or near that, we'd go ahead and build the right turn lane. The only other one I'm aware of that's dedicated, contributed to that fund is the Woods Partners rezoning, which is now all to Morrisville under construction behind the CVS. I have no idea right now about how close we are to that number or what percentage we're at. But yeah, that's, that's what I had for that one, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Rao, any other follow-up? Do any of our remote participants have any questions at this time? Okay, I would recognize Mayor Protem Johnson.
Do you need me to read out the whole thing, Chris, or?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2019-255-0 of the Morrisville Town Council approving a zoning map amendment for 101 Holly Creek Road, property located at the southwest corner of Holly Creek Road and Davis Drive to the Conditional Neighborhood Activities Center District.
I have a motion from Mayor Protem Johnson. I recognize Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I'll ask Eric Smith, our town clerk, to do a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
No.
Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
I oppose.
The motion to approve ordinance 2019-255-0B passes 5-2.
Okay, thank you very much. We are now at item 11B. And Assistant Manager, Town Manager Brandon Zudima will facilitate this next item for us. Applicants, thank you very much for your time and your patience. I know COVID threw a little bit of a wrench in it. We wish you well with your development and construction.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Congratulations. Mayor, are we taking a break soon?
We're scheduled to take a break right at 8:00.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thank you for a few minutes this evening. Coming to you tonight with a purchase contract, reference land. This is not new information. Nothing has changed since our last conversation. However, we want to bring this out in the interest of transparency and share with you and with the public. As we have previously discussed, we are seeking to purchase property for the construction of a future fire station. As we have discussed previously and as Chief Krydle has certainly helped us understand, site location is a critical component of any land purchase for this purpose. The site that we have identified has been researched by fire department staff and is confirmed as meeting one of the long-term needs for fire service in Morrisville. The proposed parcel is approximately 2.5 acres. That is currently a part of the Wake Tech Community College RTP campus here in the town of Morrisville. That parcel is on the northeast corner of the campus. It fronts out onto Paramount Parkway and is across the street from the Time Warner Cable property there. It's located between Perimeter Park Drive and Carrington Mill Boulevard, closer to Carrington Mill Boulevard on Paramount Parkway. This parcel is not intended to be built on in their current master plan, which is part of why they have agreed to sell it to the town. And part of our agreement is that the site must be used for a fire station, if not used for a fire station by the town in the future. And if the town were to wish to sell the property, Wake Tech would have the opportunity first to purchase the property back at the price that we are paying for it. Council had authorized negotiations for this property in a closed session back in May. The property has been offered to the town at a price of $106,000 per acre or a total of $265,000 for two and a half acres. This price represents the average cost that Wake Tech paid per acre for the conglomeration of properties that they have put together to make up the RTP campus there. This contract has been drafted and reviewed by the town attorney's office. And after negotiation, Town Manager Page has signed a letter of intent to purchase with the trustees of Wake Technical Community College in the amount of $265,000. We're therefore asking you to authorize a purchase contract in the amount of $265,000 as well as the necessary closing costs and costs associated with legally separating this tract of land from the larger Wake Tech property. Those funds are currently available in the Capital Reserve Project Fund for Public Safety. Happy to take any questions.
Okay, I'd just like to say this is an important land acquisition for the town. Thank you to Chief Krydle, Martha Page, Brandon Zudima, and the whole team for creating this opportunity. I know a lot of diligence and hard work went into this. Councilmember Robati?
So I'm a yes, don't worry. But I just want to know, what would be the project timeline? Assuming that this is approved tonight, what would be, what, could you just tell me like what comes next and how long you expect it to take?
So at this point, this is primarily a land purchase for future use. So our current efforts are focused around the Harris Mill Road property. That fire station we constructed first. We do not have a specific timeline right now for the use of the Wake Tech property. This is definitely secure while we have the opportunity for future use.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protem Johnson, please.
So this is another fabulous presentation tonight and a, and a vote that we're going to take. But, or a vote that we'll take on this. But kudos to you all for the work that you did and, and really kudos to Wake Tech. I really, really appreciate, they are a partner in this. So I really appreciate all their, all that they've done for us. And I really appreciate that they are doing this at a, at a really fair, fair, fair price. This is very unusual, so they did not have to do that, I think. But, so I'm happy to make a motion on this one. We're ready.
Okay, do any remote participants want to have any comments at this time?
I see that.
Okay, I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-249-0 of the Morrisville Town Council authorizing the purchase of real property at 10908 Chapel Hill Road.
I have a motion and a second. Town Clerk Smith will now facilitate our roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
Motion to approve resolution 2020-249-0, passes unanimously.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. We are now at item 12, new items. There is one new item on tonight's agenda, a proposed amendment of the land use plan and zoning map for Zero Morrisville Carpenter Road, CPA 000086-2020, and REZ 000085-2020. Chris Lawson, Planner 2, with a repeat performance, will brief counsel on the item. Mr. Lawson?
Thank you. Before I begin, actually, I think the applicants are outside in the lobby.
And take a couple-minute adjustment so we could do a little bit of sanitization here.
Okay. So, we'll just pause. We won't take a break.
That's up to council.
We all good to go for another half hour?
Yes.
Okay. We'll just stay here.
Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you very much. All yours, Mr. Lawson.
Thank you. Am I controlling the slides or?
It's right here. Just use the track.
Okay. So, good evening again. Tonight before you is item 2020-214. It's a consideration of items to amend the land use plan and zoning map for Zero Morrisville Carpenter Road. Okay. So, this is an aerial image that shows the outline of the subject parcel, which is located just west of Town Hall and Indian Creek Greenway and Trailhead. So, the property is currently undeveloped. The applicants propose to construct a place of worship on the site. The specific request for counsel tonight are the following: to amend the land use map to the designation of institutional, and to amend the zoning map to the conditional residential transition zoning district. And here's just another aerial image of the overall area. You can see there's a lot of construction going on around the Town Hall area. This picture was taken in May, and you can see that the subject parcel is squeezed between the Thornberry subdivision and the town center core Stormwater project. They're both light sandy color. So, just some more information about the zoning of the area and surrounding parcels. So, to the east is the town-owned park, Indian Creek Trailhead. To the west is the Thornberry subdivision, currently under construction, that is also zoned conditional residential transition. To the south is Morrisville Carpenter Road, and Morrisville Square Shopping Center is across Morrisville Carpenter Road. So, just some general information about the property. It's a little over two acres in size. It's not currently annexed into the town limits. It's currently undeveloped. And again, the applicants have stated they intend on constructing a place of worship. So, next, we'll get into some of the proposed conditions. The sketch plan the applicants have provided is on the right side of your screen. This also has a list of uses which would not be permitted as part of the conditional rezoning. And not mentioned on there is multifamily dwellings, but they are not allowed in this zoning district anyways. And here are the rest of the proposed conditions, and I'll just highlight numbers three, which limits the overall size of facility, and number seven, which does not allow overflow parking in surrounding neighborhoods. The Planning and Zoning Board had several questions about the conditions related to cross-access waivers, and those conditions are included because the cross-access would be required to a town park on one side and a tree preservation area of the Thornberry subdivision on the other side. That's why those are included. So, as far as transportation-related items go, Morrisville Carpenter Road is scheduled to be widened, as you heard earlier, and the site has dedicated the necessary right-of-way for that project. A transportation impact analysis was performed and found that the development meets the UDO's level of service. Any other transportation improvements or payment in lieu would be determined once the site plan is submitted for this site. And so, this slide was generated by the department's transportation planner, and it's just intended to let you compare the expected daily trips for several different uses. This slide compares the daily trips from a place of worship with those single-family attached and detached homes. And so, staff recommendation, staff recommends approval for the following reasons: the amendments are required by changed conditions. The current zoning the property allows only an emergency services station, which was not constructed on the property as originally planned. The property directly west of the site is also zoned conditional residential transition. That property shares a common access road with the subject property. Therefore, the requested rezoning is compatible with the zoning in the surrounding area. Number three, the requested land use map amendment and zoning map amendment would allow for development that is compatible with the developments in the town center, therefore resulting in a logical and orderly development pattern. And then, number four, the property is located along a major thoroughfare in the town center, which is typically considered a suitable location for the types of uses permitted in the residential transition district. The Planning and Zoning Board recommended approval of both requests, vote of five to zero at their last meeting. And then, you'll be asked to act on these items at your next meeting, which will also have a public hearing. So, that's scheduled for September 22nd. So, that's my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and applicants are also here. Thank you.
Okay. So, we're getting briefed here on the 8th. Our public hearing is the 22nd. We're expected to take action on October 13th. Recognize Councilmember Rao with a question or comment.
Yeah, just a couple of questions, I guess, for both the applicant and the staff. Do we have any, could you let, inform us in terms of like the number of attendees at the worship services, when the peak times would be, morning and evening, possibly, how many people you would expect?
Absolutely. Thank you for your time, all of you. I'm Rabbi Israel Cutler, Chabad here in Morrisville, and I'm very appreciative of the opportunity to be here. I know some of you beforehand, I've met some of you beforehand, and at least for the Jewish community, it's not very large in this area, but we're part of the diversity in the neighborhood. And really, this would be the first synagogue in western Wake County, just to give you an idea, and it's a lot of, very, very special to have that here in Morrisville. To answer your question, when we are currently at Grace Parks, we're actually functioning in a very, very small facility, just to give you an idea of the scope of our congregation, how large it is. We don't even have a dedicated parking lot right now. Pre-COVID, we're getting about 30, 40, 50 people on a regular Saturday, that is our peak time Saturday, and a religious school of about 60 or 70 kids on Sunday. During the week, people come for counseling. There's little adult education classes in the evening, 10, 20, 25 people, but none of this is during peak hours of traffic, and the traffic study supports that idea. So, again, we have on a regular use about 40, 50 people on Saturdays and about 70, 80 children. There are a few unique holidays where we're actually that time of year right now. We can discuss that if you want.
Okay. Thank you. And as a follow-up, would you be, we're always looking for organizations to partner with as we look for more space. So, would your organization, or church, or synagogue be open to collaborating with town of Morrisville so that we can do events and things like that?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, we would have to actually look into the particulars of it, but absolutely, and I can just turn to all of you and say, we've always struggled because for our high holidays, we've never found a suitable location within Morrisville to rent space. We've always had to go to Cary each year for the high holidays because there wasn't multipurpose space that was sufficient for us. So, we understand this question well, and we look forward to kind of being part of the whole downtown neighborhood, center of town over here, and being able to offer our space for things, absolutely, and parking for that matter as well, as we'll get to in a moment.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Councilmember Robati, and then Councilmember Fender, please.
So, Rabbi, first, I'd like to say how pleased and proud I would be to be part of the council that can approve the first synagogue in western Wake. That would be very meaningful for me. But, I know Chris already knows what I'm going to say, but I'm looking at this plot that you've chosen, and literally, all I see is the taking down tree cover that, in an area that has already lost just so much. And, so, I'm wondering, I guess I'm wondering, would you be amenable to considering not clear-cutting the lot for your building, for planting indigenous trees, once the building is erected, for preserving, you know, preserving as much green space as possible on the lot? You know, like I said, I think this is a project that we, that I, you know, really want to do. It's just, it's just a really difficult time because there's so much development going on in our town, and, you know, to lose a lot of green space right along the road when there's so little left there is tough for me. So, could you speak to that a little bit?
My name is Danny Howell. I'm with Real Engineering. We have a unique situation with this project. It's obviously very challenging, you know, as far as an interesting shaped lot with a triangular shape, but we have the Morrisville Carpenter Road improvements going on parallel to this. And there is a severe cut. Our height is very high, and there's a cut. There's only so much you can do with the road elevation where it is now. So, if you look at the town's project and NCGO's project, there's a bisecting line through our site that is there, cut that they're going to have to clear just to do the road, pretty much the middle of our site. What we're hoping to do with that, too, is to combine the earthwork on our site to make it, you know, mesh well with what the town's project is doing as well. So, there is going to be some, you know, there's no way around the clear-cutting at the front towards the Morrisville Carpenter side, but we do have a significant portion of the repair and buffer on our site, too, and all of that will stay what it as is. But, again, the other part of it would just be chasing grade to try to get back to, again, everything where the UTO and Morrisville are doing their project for the road, the site is up here. So, we're just going to have to tie in. We'll do our best we can.
Okay. Thank you. You're going to be astounded how much you end up talking about trees.
Councilmember Fender, please.
I have a question sort of related to Councilmember Robati's question, but, and this is with regards to the landscape buffer along Morrisville Carpenter. What is required for the landscape buffer for that zone?
I believe it's a type G. Give me one second, unless Danny knows it off the top of your head. Do you know?
Correct.
What's type G?
There's three different, I think there's three options.
Give me one second, I'll be able to sit out for you.
Show you, I hope.
Okay, yeah, so it is a type G. So, there are several options. So, the first one requires three shade trees per 100 feet, and then six shade tree, six understory trees per 100 feet. So, a shade tree is 14 feet tall, planting, three and a half inch caliper. Understory, I think, is right around eight feet. So, that's one of the options I think they intend on utilizing. Another one, do you still have the option with the wall? Okay.
That's correct.
So, there's another one that's closer to the entrance to the Thornberry neighborhood that has a wall option, and that's the type G option two. That one, again, is three shade trees per 100 feet, six shade tree, six understory trees per 100 feet, and then that requires a solid masonry wall, three to four feet high, with 15 evergreen shrubs per 100 linear feet between the wall and the street. So, the first option I talked about without the wall, it has to be 20 feet wide. The second one with the wall only has to be 10 feet wide. And so, within that 10 or 20 feet, no other development can happen in that area.
And are you going to be able to implement that with what you were talking about, the grade difficulties?
Correct. And it's not a, in this case, it's not a grade wall so much as it is an actual wall, you know, for screening. So, you know, we haven't talked about with the site plan part of the area, way to implement it, because again, we are higher than the road. So, not sure, you know, it wouldn't be a retaining wall, per se, that that would be advantageous to us. It has to be a freestanding wall, then grade behind it, going up with landscaping and your shrubs and your trees.
So, you're going to have a wall along that entire frontage?
We have, right now, again, we're in sketch plan phase, but we have, right now, we're showing to get our building where we want it. We have a retain, or we have that wall, that three-foot masonry wall, from the southern building corner up to the Sears Drive, you know, side of our property. That whole frontage has it along there. And then, once you get by the building, we open up and get more open space in that green area you see between, the lighter green area you see between the building and the buffer. So, we have the full buffer width there with no wall after you get by the building. Currently.
All right.
I don't see any other questions, remote participants? No? Okay.
One other piece, I just want to remark that some of you might have even seen me or some others walking it down Morrisville Carpenter Road sometimes on our Sabbath. So, you were talking about greens, and together walkability is a big part of what this will bring to the area, because there are a number of our participants who are a little more observant and do not drive on the Sabbath. So, you can envision kind of working well with the whole downtown area and people' walkability in the area, and I think that's something that we will contribute to the neighborhood as well.
And I'd like to recognize Planning Director Stiegel.
Thank you, Mayor. I did just want to note that one of the members of the applicant's team is participating remotely, and I do believe she had a brief presentation.
This is Glenda Top. I'm the planning consultant representing Chabad, and I've been sitting here listening. I did have a short presentation, but it sounds like everything has been mentioned, and I just want to reiterate a couple of things that have been said in terms of the importance of having this use here, thanking staff for their time and effort working with us, developing conditions that we've agreed to. As Mr. Howell pointed out, there are some challenges to the site, but all in all, the Chabad feels that it's an excellent location, not far from where they currently are, and are very hopeful that as we move through this process, that we will see approval by council. So, thank you very much for listening to us tonight.
We, I really appreciate the fact that the trees that are shown are going to be staying and not clear-cut and replanted and things like that. Preserving as much of the natural growth is very great. There will be sidewalks the length of Morrisville Carpenter, so the walkability will be there. So, we look forward to having the public hearing on this on the 22nd. Oh, I'm sorry. Mayor Protem Johnson.
So, good afternoon, or good evening, Rabbi. It's good to see you again, and I'm going to echo Councilmember Robati. I'd be happy to be a part of approving a synagogue in western Wake County, especially in Morrisville. But, right now, we're talking about rezoning. So, having said all that, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to ask some important questions in case, in case it doesn't happen, because this is, the rezoning that we would approve goes with the land regardless of what is built one day. So, with that in mind, I just want to ask Chris about the opt, or the condition seven, where it talks about if parking is exceeded, and I really appreciate that condition, because we know in many of our houses of worship, I know in my own, for those very important events during the year, parking becomes a real issue. So, if something else is built on this property at some time, what does that condition say to somebody else? I guess that's what, I just want to feel comfortable about that.
just want to feel comfortable about that. Is that telling, and here's where, because I'm going to, assuming is really bad, so let me tell you what I'm assuming. I'm assuming it's saying you can build something here and not have the adequate parking, and we'll be okay with that. So tell me that's not what this is saying.
No. So this was something that staff and applicants worked through. How do we deal with, with religious uses? We know there are certain holidays where there's going to be a lot more people than traditionally come on day to day. So we feel that this can, this condition, the way it's worded, and we worked with both the Assistant Town Manager and Police Chief on this one, so that if there is a religious use and it does have those extra people that come, they're not parking in the neighborhood that's being built right next door. However, when the site plan comes in and myself or a different planner reviewing it, they're still going to have to meet our parking, parking requirements that are in the UDO. And that is based on the assembly square footage within the structure. So they're still going to have to meet our normal parking standards. This is just a kind of a catch-all for if they happen to have multiple people show up, they have to park somewhere else and maybe get shuttled, or some other kind of ways. They're not just parking in the neighborhood next door or adjacent neighborhoods.
Okay. And that's not anything different than we do for other houses of worship here in town, or some big facilities here in town, or that we do ourselves when we have some of our own big events. So, okay, that makes me feel a little more comfortable about that. The only other question I have is, and again, this is, currently, there's one use on this property, which is clearly not one that is going to happen. So the property needs to be rezoned. And now we're opening it up and for many uses, not just a house of worship. And so, again, you've listed a lot of uses that we would, that would not be allowed. So that, that's really helpful. And Chris, the table you provided to us with the color-coded, there were green and the red, I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
To do that. You've done that before. So I really appreciate that. It's the little things in life that make life easy. So thank you for doing that. But there, there is one use on here, and maybe it's not as awful as I, as I think it potentially could be. And somebody, if you can help me with that, it's under the telecommunication uses. It talks about antenna colocation and towers and non-concealed and concealed towers. So just help me understand what, if this is approved in its current suggested proposal, would, would, would a tower be allowed on this property?
That's a good question. Thank you for saying that you like my use table that I highlighted here. So as you see, there are a lot of telecommunication uses, and only those, it looks like three are allowed. One of them is, has to be on town-owned properties, so this wouldn't count for that one. That's the concealed towers, town-owned property. The other two are, the first one is antenna colocation or combination on existing tower. So that would only be if there's an existing cell tower and it has one certain cellphone provider and another one wants to locate on that tower. So that one wouldn't apply to this site because there's not, there's not an existing tower. The other one is non-concealed attached antenna. And if you will bear with me, I will have to look up the definition of what that exactly means.
So that's okay. That's okay. If you can bring that information back. And I will tell you, the only, this one gives me a little bit of heartburn because I was on council years ago when we had a special use permit for a tower that came into an existing neighborhood. And Town Attorney will remember that one well. We, it was, the tower was never built in the end, but it was a multi-year process, and they were, it was a little messy. So I just want to make sure that we're, we have existing, existing residents in the vicinity, and pretty soon, we're going to have residents in Thornbury right next to this property. So I just, I need to understand about a tower and where that. So if you can just give us that, give, bring us back that information, that'd be helpful. And I just thought of one other. I, I'm going to add one more. The utility facility minor, which is right there, you know, under transportation and utility uses, if I could get it, just tell me what that, you don't have to say, you know, tell us now, Chris, but if you can give us some information and examples of what that is, that'd be helpful.
Okay. Certainly.
Thank you.
And I guess looking forward, if the applicant is willing to put those in the non-permitted uses, that takes the problem away completely.
If the applicant's willing to remove those from the use, that, that would certainly solve it.
Yeah, that would solve it. So that's just a thought to put out there. I think that's where we were going with that, maybe. Don't have to answer now. Just, we've got plenty of time. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, seeing no other questions or comments. Thank you to the applicant for coming, bringing this forth. Thank you to Chris and staff for preparing it. We will look forward to a public hearing on September 22nd and potential action on October 3rd. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we're on item 13, future meetings, events, and citizen involved in opportunities. There's always a full listing of our events on our town calendar at www.townofmorrisville.org. Wanted to mention a few, save the dates. All of these are, the planning is in process. Please check our website for details. But October 6th is National Night Out. The Town's 2020 Fall Bulk Item Pickup is the week of October 19th to 23rd. During this special designated week, residents receiving residential curbside solid waste services may leave a total of five acceptable bulk items curbside on their regular trash recycling curbside pickup day. October 24th is Trick or Treat the Trail Trunk Retreat. That's scheduled to be 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. at Morrisville Community Park. And November 11th is our Veterans Day Celebration. At this time, we're at item 14, Council Manager Comments. I'll now recognize council members to make comments at this time. I'll begin with Councilmember Rao, followed by Mayor Pretem Johnson, please.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I just want to extend a prayer to the Velengary family, whose, Selva Roger Velengary was murdered last week in Cary. And I just wanted to say a word to his family that I know the Cary Police Department will do their best to complete this investigation. Real quickly, I know you all are going to talk about it, so great to be at the MFC ribbon cutting. Want to thank everyone who came out this week to the Virtual Startup Summit to hear from John Chambers, former CEO and Chairman of Cisco. We'll be posting that on different sites so people can listen to his great advice about surviving and thriving in a COVID economy. And my final two points is, I do want to give a shout out to Councilmember Garamella for preparing videos in Hindi and Telugu for the census. It makes me very proud as an elected official to know that we're such a diverse council, but to have him do this, I think, is very special. And I just wanted to thank him, not only as a council member, but as a friend, for being such a strong leader and to connect with an ever-growing part of our community. The final thing that I want to say is that, on a positive note, just last week, the Triangle Business Journal issued a publication of the top public companies in North Carolina, and 10% of the largest companies in our state are in Morrisville. Sinios Health, Channel Advisor, HEAT Biologics, Liquidia Technologies, Novan, Issure Direct, Transenterics, and Charleston Covard. Many of these companies continue to grow and are doing well, some of them even participating in the COVID pandemic, either developing vaccines or different technologies like Liquidia and Novan. So I think it's just a great thing for our town to celebrate, that we are living, connected, living well, and we're connecting, we're connected to some of the top companies in the world right here in Morrisville. So thank you, and look forward to the rest of the meeting.
Mayor Pretem Johnson?
So the only comment I have is to thank everyone, our staff, that put together the ribbon cutting this morning for the Morrisville Aquatics and Fitness Center. You all did a fabulous job. That was a wonderful event. We had two news crews there. I did see one news coverage. I have not seen the other one yet, but that was, that was really nice to get some positive coverage in these days where so much is not really positive out in the world. So, so thank you all. It was, it was well done. We all were socially distanced. And once again, the facility is beautiful. So I commend you all on, on all that you've done to get us here.
Yeah, I'd like to echo that the entire staff had a big part in that from start to finish. So we're so happy that it's open now. My son Ryan and I rode around Morrisville to the farmer's market and the live burn training on Davis Drive a week ago Saturday. Thank you to Morrisville Fire Rescue and the Police Department for providing us safe viewing for our curious residents. Seeing our first responders live and in person is a great way to begin to understand how important they are to our community. So great job. Keep up the great work, Chief Kirdle and your team. Quick census update, the Raleigh Chamber of Commerce has calculated that our countywide undercount could lead to $51 million less each year for Wake County for each of the next 10 years until the 2030 census. So money, that's money needed to keep Wake County a wonderful place to live. Morrisville's self-response rate as of August 31st is 67.4%. We're shooting for 100%, obviously, but 82% is the Wake County goal. We would at least like to reach that. Estimates out there indicate that $1,600 per counted person is the amount that is at stake. So when you think about it, if we find a way to have 375 more people complete their census, not households, just people, that is the equivalent of one penny on our tax rate for each of the next 10 years. So please tell your friends and neighbors to complete their census. These are your tax dollars, which will go to other towns and cities if our residents are not counted. So check out the census at 2020census.gov, and please share widely. Now, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Robati.
I don't have any comments, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Robati?
I just wanted to remind everyone that it is, it's now the time where you can request your absentee ballot, no matter who you're voting for. Please make a plan to vote. Vote safe. And you can request an absentee ballot at www.ncsb.gov, North Carolina State Board of Elections.gov. And, yeah, let's all participate in the democratic process.
Okay. Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to express my thanks to our staff, our public works, our Park and Recreation Team, and of course, our Citizen Committee on Park and Recreation for a wonderful ribbon cutting experience. But the facility has been planned for many, many years, and to see it really be realized is exciting. And I hope that each one of our families are able to enjoy one of the amenities that we now can offer 12 months a year with the aquatics environment. As we reopen slowly, due to the restrictions being easing, we shall be able to welcome more and more people over time. So that's a really nice thing, especially since pool season across our area is starting to close for many of the HOAs and other communities. The Aquatic Center will now be able to remain open 12 months a year. So congratulations to everybody involved, and thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Garamella, please.
No comments, Mayor.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to recognize Brandon Zudema, our Assistant Town Manager, for comments from staff.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick updates. As you know, last week, the Governor issued Executive Order 163, which put us into Phase 2.5. So with that, the good news is that that allows us to reopen additional portions of MFC, as everybody got to see at the ribbon cutting today. So as of tomorrow morning, we are reopening the fitness center side, the group fitness area. So we'll have the entire facility open with limited capacity so that we can maintain social distancing. And then, beginning next Monday, the 14th, we'll also begin to offer some fitness classes, both in the pool and in the fitness area of the building. So at that point, we'll be at full operation, but with limited capacity. And then, of course, we'll continue to evaluate that over time and comply with the executive order issued by the Governor, and make sure that we're operating that facility in a safe and appropriate manner for our variety of users. So we're excited to have that. Also, would just share with you, also related to the executive order, we are continuing to evaluate what is in there in terms of capacities and other information, including capacity in this room and staff capacity and other related issues. Our intention would be to come back to you at the September 22nd meeting with an update on how we'll proceed in that regard. Happy to take any questions.
A quick question about the MFC. Generally, attendance is through signup genius, or can people walk in to do any of these things?
So we encourage the use of signup genius so that they make sure they have a space available. Thank you for that reminder. Signup Genius is available through the Town's website by going to the Parks and Rec MFC site. So we do encourage that, and that's for pool lane use, that is for fitness use, also for tennis courts, to ensure that you have a spot available to you when you'd like to go. Thank you.
Thank you for those updates. Appreciate it. Okay, at this time, it's 8:05. We're going to take a 10-minute break and then come back for our work session. So if we could please reconvene at 8:16. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. So tonight, I've put in front of each of you, and we've provided in the packet, a copy of a draft land acquisition policy. Draft tonight, we're going to review as council. And we'll use the document itself. I'm going to break it apart and pause after each section, just to collect some additional input from you. I would suggest that don't dwell so much on the wordsmithing so much as, does it cover the content, the valued information that you were looking for? It was built based on your feedback through a couple of cycles and some best practices that staff has put in here. So with that, semantics of wording, if something is very important, then let us know. But you will have another opportunity to look at this when, when you decide that it's ready for us to bring a briefing item to you for adoption. So a quick reminder for policies, at this level, it's good that they have some gray, but it's also good that they have enough framework to provide your staff with direction of what, what's your interest, what's your goals that you want us to try and accomplish. So just a quick reminder of that, some gray is good, but it does need some bones to it also. All right. So we'll go section by section. I'll start with the purpose. Remember, the purpose statement is really, what's your overarching goal? What are you trying to accomplish that's important here? I think what we heard you say a number of times is, is you're committed to doing land acquisition to further capital projects that reap tangible results for the community. And through that, you know, in order to move certain projects along, you have to acquire some land. With that, Town Center is likely a candidate for that. We actually did that with Town Center previously, did a land assemblage that allowed us to get to where you are today with, with Town Center conversations. And that it aligned with your strategic goals. So the land acquisition policy, it's meant to really provide that framework for us. So we know what you want us to do on your behalf, and it's based on really accomplishing a future public purpose. Land acquisition has to accomplish something, and it's a future public purpose. So I'm going to pause there. For the purpose section, are there any questions, points of clarification, any content missing? Good to move to the next section?
I think so.
I don't see anyone. Okay, no additional comments from the virtual folks. So we'll move to Section 2. Section 2 is pretty, pretty easy, but very important. Section 2 is about definitions. So for the purpose of a policy, it's important that we use, for the sake of the policy, terms that we all understand. So I started a list of items that were important to clarify and define for the sake of the policy. I also noted here that this section could expand as the policy matures. One thought is, as we deal with what your definition of maybe open space is or green space, that might be something we could add a definition. That certainly gives staff, for example, an understanding of how you're using this term, because that, for example, is one that could mean many different things to seven different people. Just a thought. So I'll pause there. Any thoughts, any points of clarification? Any adds or takeaways?
Let me just react to your statement that open space and green space maybe should be two operational definitions in this section, if you think that would help staff understand a little bit clearer and help us clarify what we mean by those. Especially insofar that Wake County has open space grants. So, what does that mean as compared to green space?
And, and staff's looking for the collective of the entity at this point. This is your collective policy. Remember, your, how we got here is, we built it based on your individual input and feedback. So, if that is a council interest to add, just let us know. Definition of green space or open space.
Meaning, if people don't speak up, it's not going to be added?
Silent majority rules at this point.
So, silence is not a scent. So, if you hear something you think is important, please speak up. Councilmember Robati?
I don't know the difference between open space and green space, so that would be helpful to me. Thank you for bringing it up.
Are you just talking about adding definitions?
Adding a definition here, as it's mentioned in the policy. Certainly helpful to staff.
I think it's gonna, well...
It's gonna mean, depending on the project, is that what you're?
Yeah, and it's gonna depend on a lot of things. So, to your first, or one of your first points early on is to make things flexible is gonna be important, too. So, I'm worried. But, it depends on what you come back with. I'm fine with you bringing something back, too.
All right.
Some kind of definition. But, I think, I think, once again, it all depends.
Well, let's, let's, if council's okay, staff can give it a go with the definition based on your individual input, based on what we commonly use, the term open space. If it fits here, that's good. If it doesn't, and it needs to be a broader definition and become, become something bigger for that sake, then we can certainly approach it at that time. So, I'm not hearing any other negatives or any stop here. So, all right. I do not see any other questions from the virtual participants. So, I'll move to the next section. So, Section 3 talks about priorities. What makes land use acquisition a public purpose? For the, it's really for the good of the whole community. It's not for the sake of a private entity, solely for a private entity. It's meant for a bigger purpose, a bigger defined or future designated use. Or, in some cases, you know you're going to have a fire station in a certain area of the community, but you'd have it specifically created a project at this point. So, so you might move forward with a land acquisition as you have, have done tonight. So, land availability, you, you expressed the importance in terms of priority that it was diminishing. And, you recognize the importance of site control to really move key projects or plans, adopted plans that you, you have, you want to realize them. We know that growth is a driving factor in Morrisville, and it causes cost escalation. So, with land acquisition, it's very important to have deliberate priorities. And how you accomplish that, to avoid randomization of, of purchasing land, is to shape it through your capital investment program. And, the reason for that is your capital investment program balances the analysis long-term projection with overseeing how it impacts operations with your limited resources to what your capital investment desires are. So, it's really your management tool that you have strategically to project long-term. And, land acquisition is one of those things you should be funneling through because the CIP designates public purpose. So, this section for priorities talks about the importance of doing that. It talks about your important vision elements through your other adopted plans and trying to accomplish those, that they define that public purpose. And that it should also be used for that general welfare of the community, for those things, those other things that are going to come up, affordable housing, transit-oriented development. And then, to maximize the opportunities that are presented to you through other types of partnerships, can oftentimes achieve a public purpose by working with private developers to get public assets built in your community. So, some of the short-term and long-term items, as what I heard from you as individuals, are listed here. And, staff would be charged with, with accomplishing on your behalf, trying to achieve these, plan for, forecast, and align resources effectively to achieve these short and long-term priorities. So, I'll pause there, see if there's any comments. Any questions for clarification?
I have two things real quick. On page 2, Item 3, in Section 3, "To promote the general welfare of the community and address emerging critical needs." I, I want this to be flexible, so I'd suggest getting rid of the word "critical" because we have emerging needs that may or may not be considered critical, but are important to try to get ahead of, given our scarcity of land. So, I don't want to see this document as a limiting factor. We're only going to do, take steps when something's critical because, in some ways, all this land acquisition is critical because of the nature of it at this time. So...
So, the suggestion is to remove "critical," that emerging needs implies a sense of urgency. Are we all good with that? Head nods would do, just as a general consensus? Okay. Seeing others, no other comments from the virtual group? Any other comments?
I had one other thing about the table. For, I asked the council to consider moving affordable housing from long-term priorities to short-term priorities, essentially for the same reason. If there's going to be some land that's developable for affordable housing, I think sooner rather than later would be my hope for that. The others, I think, are a little bit in that three-to-five-year frame.
So, in your, in your, your individual input, your common theme was expressing to staff that affordable housing, as well as transit-oriented development, were more of those long-term. So, so I would have to ask council, is there a consensus that it should be in both categories, columns? Should it be just a short-term?
Councilmember Robati, did you have something on this one or some other comment?
Something on this.
Okay, please share.
Yeah, to me, it seems like, not specific to affordable housing, but I think we'd almost have to do the things in the short-term column before we consider adding another big block of housing to the town anyway. So, I, I disagree with, with moving, I mean, I don't think this table necessarily binds us to anything, right?
I mean, no, it does not.
If a great affordable housing opportunity comes up in two years and we want to seize it, we still can, right?
Right. It could be considered an emerging need, that an opportunity presents itself, and staff is obligated to bring that, that information to you. Understanding the short-term and the long-term priorities just gives us a framework of what's important. And, I'll remind you, this is a five-year, short and long-term. So, some would often even say that five years not really long-term. It's really, could be short-term. There's been at staff-level conversation, should this table actually be here when we've already expressed each one of these in your purpose statement as being important? I will say, putting it here is what I think I heard you expect, that there would be some high level of priority here. In, through your CIP projects or your CIP plan, you're going to have that prioritization of projects that we align to these policies, land acquisition, Town Center, Greenways, TOD, and affordable housing. There'll be projects that we put together that you can prioritize through your CIP. This is just that higher-level guidance to us, that we know what you value when you speak land acquisitions and how you might see it in the short and long-term. I could take the one to two years off and the three to five years off and just leave them as short-term and long-term.
And if I, if I may add a clarifying point, and, and the example I'll use is, is a Town Center, and it wouldn't be any different for any of these others. It doesn't mean you're not going to do anything for three to five years.
Right.
If, if opportunities come up, it, it's really what your long-term strategy is, and knowing a Town Center or something may not come to fruition for that long. But, it doesn't mean you wouldn't take advantage of opportunities as they may come up for something that's in that long-term priorities category.
Okay. So, to that end, as long as all 10 are on the table and are being cog-dizant about, I think that's important. I think there's a comment from Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. You asked about the affordable housing, whether it should be in short-term and long-term. I think it should be in both because, I'll, I'll remind the councilmembers that when we had our discussion policy about affordable housing, and we had a consultant come in, we, we were considering programs to help support staff in, if they wanted to live in the town that they were working, help support maybe some options for, for offsetting housing costs. And, we were also looking at families that might need help in coordination with Wake County programs. So, these programs vary year to year, and different land parcels might be more suitable for denser affordable housing than others. I think our real estate might be changing a little bit with COVID conditions affecting some of the commercial. And, and, you know, again, you know, we have very little undeveloped land, but redevelopment might be something that we would be considering in the future. And because of that, I, that's why I think affordable housing should be in both short-term and long-term. So, we really kind of keep that top of mind and not just undeveloped land, but, you know, repurposing existing. Thank you.
Do you have a comment?
Yeah. Councilmember Fender, please.
I think it makes sense to have short-term priority and long-term because then give staff some sort of guidance of, you know, what's, what is more important. And I think it makes sense to have the, I mean, in my mind, parks, land acquisition for parks and open space is a higher priority than transit-oriented development. So, I think it's good to have that, that focus. A couple other comments. I'm, I'm assuming Fire Station Number 2 relocation would now come off?
It definitely would. With, with the, the action, it's something we would work towards. Do you have your land acquisition? Now, it turns into that, that design and construction project, so...
Yeah, I mean, because for the past few months, that's been like the overriding priority. I guess, I, like, the, the line item for adopted capital investment projects, is there anything identified for that?
For adopted capital invest, yes, yes, ma'am. There are actual project concepts in your CIP that some, actually, you own property that you would work towards either redeveloping or changing or enhancing. And then, there are other projects that have no land with them, and you would either have to acquire that land or the easements to do Sawmill Creek, the whole length of the Sawmill Creek Greenway, or a dog park. You would have to acquire land, or you'd have to utilize an existing town-owned property that you might think was feasible, or combine it with another expanded park area.
Okay.
So, did you have other questions? I'm sorry.
Well, my other comment was, I would lean to have, if I mean, a fire station, land acquisition for the fire station isn't a priority now, I would lean to having Town Center land acquisition bumping higher up on the list and, you know, being within one to two years.
Yeah. Looking at the table, I'd agree with that. In front of affordable housing, actually, given Mayor, I mean, Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson's indication that it's more programming and not less land acquisition for affordable housing that we're considering.
So, so if...
Councilmember Rao has a thought?
Yeah, I could see affordable housing being both in, you know, short-term and long-term. I think we, as a council, I think, have to make a decision on, I think it's one thing to have, put affordable housing down as a priority, but, I mean, recently, there's been a lot of, you know, citizens concerned about multifamily. And, I think, I understand those concerns, but I think if we're going to have affordable housing, we have to be open to approving some multifamily when we go to neighborhood activity centers. So, for me, I just feel like, you know, until we, as a council, decide, you know, how we can, because you're not going to be able to have affordable housing without multifamily, number one. You're just not going to be able to have it. So, we're going to see rezonings come before the council. And so, I guess the question is, you know, as we go through the land use plan, you know, are we going to sort of try to figure out where affordable housing may fit in as we go through the land use plan versus, you know, reducing the percentage of the multifamily? I'm just, just thinking out loud, just my comments, because I, I, I think that, I see a lot of the decisions that we're making being like, well, let's deny rezoning because we want to have schools and we want to have roads. And, neither one of those issues, we really have a lot of control of because we don't decide, I mean, we're working to get the schools, and we, we can't, we don't know how much money the DOT is going to give us for roads. So, I, I'm, I'd like to have it both in short-term and long-term because I think that being an inclusive community is really important. And I don't think you can be an inclusive community if you don't have affordable housing.
You know, I think you could have a small footprint. Housing is part of affordable housing. Like a habitat for humanity type.
Yeah, I mean...
I mean, I don't, I don't think affordable housing has to just be multifamily.
So, I'm hearing a general consensus that you would like to see them and see affordable housing in both columns.
Yeah.
For fire stations, while I, while I designated it as Fire Station 2, you do have a bigger picture for future fire or public safety needs that go beyond just Fire Station 2 and your Wake-type property. So, I'm not sure that it's good to remove it, but I will take a look at it in combination with adding or putting affordable housing over here and see if there's an adjustment to be made.
To, to that point, maybe instead of calling it Fire Station 2, more...
Public safety.
Public, um, public building, public facility for staff, some way to make that wording because that's something that we've heard.
I, I agree. Should have caught that myself. Okay.
So, can I, I'm, I'm okay with leaving the chart as is. I, I think, I think, these are all really important, and I'd like to see all of them in, you know, one to two years. But, that, that's not practical. And, Councilmember Fender said, you, we've got to give staff something to focus on, and you can't focus on all 10.
True, just like you can't focus on all 25 project concepts in your capital investment program.
And, and I, I really appreciate the comments about, this chart doesn't mean we're not going to take advantage of an opportunity that comes along, just because something is out in year five. But, if that window of opportunity is in year one, we may jump on it. And you all will keep an eye on that, I'm assuming. I, I'm okay with leaving it for the minute, the way it looks here, with the changes to put, you know, instead of saying a fire station, put a public facility or something.
More gray.
Generic, yeah. A more flexible, not generic, more flexible. But, that doesn't mean we won't, we won't be looking at buying Town Center properties, maybe.
Again, it just gives staff a framework. It tells us what, in a five-year window, is important to you. And if we know there's an opportunity or an emerging need... an opportunity or an emerging need comes up, our partnership, we're going, that, that might move town center forward faster, we, we will bring that to council. We will work that for you. So again, it's, it's not black and white. It is, these are the things you value, and, and so it could be that, to meet your interest is in leaving it over here, it could be simply as adding a note or a bullet or disclaimer that, that says something to that effect, that it's flexible in terms of emerging opportunities.
Yeah, essentially, we don't-
We could remove the one and two-year and the three and five-year. We could move those off, and that generally still tells staff what you value and what you're interested in, in this window, and will bring to you if something needs to move forward faster because opportunity is presented itself.
I don't think it's the years that's giving us heartburn. It's the two different buckets, so what, whatever you label them, if you took the years off, it's still going to say short-term and long-term.
Then we can merge the buckets together.
Well, no, I like the comment you made. This does not preclude anything, you know, however you want to put it, I don't, you know.
We don't have to complete short-term before looking at long-term.
No, we'll take advantage of opportunities that have come along.
Yeah, that, I got a comment.
I like what Liz is saying, just, you could keep the short-term and long-term titles, just remove the years.
Yeah, I'd support that.
Yeah, I-
Councilmember Garamella, please.
Yeah, a- actually, like, you know, uh, what Jeannie said is, like, just because we are looking for future parkland and open space does not preclude us from, you know, if opportunity presents us, uh, for a town center site control. So just having it in one bucket is okay, you know, uh, with a clear understanding what, uh, what Jeannie is trying to depict is, the one on the left, that's one to two years, is what ha- has more consensus, right? Jeannie, like, based on, um, whatever the, you know, you have, uh, listened to us. So i- i- it's just a bucket here, you know? I think it does not matter what it is, and, like, the fire station two, you know, it was a need, we got it done, including the other fire station. So that's not even there here.
And, and if I may, if I may add, um, as much as guidance for staff, this, this is guidance for council as you talk about prioritizing and planning a CIP over multiple years and staging your financial resources to accomplish your goals. And so your priorities in the short and long terms should translate and be reflective in your CIP discussions that then help staff put together plans to help you get there. And as you remember, your CIP is that five-year window that we adjust every year, and your prioritization of the projects that go into those plans. So as much for us, it's for you to recognize what you're trying to accomplish and when.
And I'd say that it's not really up to us sometimes about which one of these will rise, because the opportunity in the land may drive what opportunity rises first. So I guess my goal is that this is a tool that brings more opportunities for us to say yes than just a policy that sits there. I want it to be very active and used to bring us more opportunities to say yes and make the decisions that advance our plan. Did you want to say anything, Councilmember Robati? I see you're holding, okay. Um, so are we good with section three? Any other comments on section? It sounds like, is there consensus to just remove the years? Is that what I kind of heard? I think we're okay removing the years, but leaving things in the table as is.
Leaving the things in the table as is. And then I can certainly add a note at the bottom for that. Let's see if that helps the feel of it for you.
We'll add that. The availability of land is an external factor, so we don't necessarily drive that, so.
You've already expressed the urgency of it, the commitment of it, and the policies here for you to give us the wheels to put in motion. All right. Speaking of putting things in motion, uh, section four, other key factors and important action items to initiate. I would call this your roadmap. These are the things that really should be done in order for staff to execute on your behalf. I've provided you with a vacant developable land map as it currently stands, um, as of last, its last update, and then existing town-owned properties. It's important you know what you probably already have, or that you already have something. Um, in the existing town-owned properties, it actually totaled up about 230 acres. Now, with that said, there's some little bits and pieces here or there that might not be something that you can really do much with. They're just easements or, or dedicated land that came with some site plans. Uh, but there are other pieces of property, for example, the one across the street, which was your Triangle Go property, um, that your, uh, trail connection is going to, um, be on for the, uh, getting to the Crabtree Hatcher Creek Greenway, that little section that'll come with the Mooresville Carpenter Road Improvement Project. You own that property, it's vacant land, and, and that, it's important to know what those, those properties are as you're thinking of just capital projects in general. You may have an inventory to move things. Yes, ma'am?
I, I have a question about the map, Jeannie. Cedar Park District Park is not highlighted.
No, it's not on here, and that was a question I had for my GIS person. I'll, I'll bring that information back.
Yeah, I know we don't, but Church Street Park is highlighted, so I, I think, I think they both need to be highlighted and then have some kind of a-
Different designation.
Asterisk, because we did, we did that-
We did purchase the Church Street land. It just happens to be in a Wake County jurisdiction, the RTP Park.
Well, okay, you're right. We did purchase it. You're, you're 100% correct, but it, it comes with a huge caveat.
Well, and, and I'll offer, this map does not tell you what's available for use. This is what we own. This building we're sitting on here is in it, all of our parks are. It doesn't tell you what's available for other use. It just shows you what we've owned.
Okay.
Or what we own, and, and, and that would be some of the work that staff would do to go those next levels and layers of what is available, what do we know about it, those types of things, to explore potential future uses.
Yes, when I looked at the data, for example, just a quick at a glance, there's probably 100 acres, really has building facilities of sorts on, like the restroom across the street, um, the town hall, campus, uh, that's noted on here. Uh, so that would be something that in, in development of that area of interest map, that we could extrapolate out of the data and get more of a granular look of really what's, what do you own, where are your areas of interest, where are some overlaps that could occur?
So you mentioned areas of interest. Is that geographical areas in general? Is how, what is the definition of areas of interest? Because that's peppered through here.
I call it in areas of interest on purpose is to avoid being parcel-specific, so we're, we're treading on some what are really sensitive issues. If you pre-designated and designate something's going to be a park, but you don't own that land yet, you can create some hardship for us property owners that, that you haven't had a conversation with. So what is a best practice? A best practice is to, to look really more at an areas of interest map, and you see an example of that in your Parks and Rec Master Plan, where it designated these hot zones of where you probably needed to focus on developing future parks or open space. Uh, it could be called a radial map, where there's a, a circular area in a portion of the town that because of your adopted plans and what they may designate and/or your CIP items that, that already exist that have maybe a specific area that, that it's designated, we can plot those on a map and show the hot spots of where we need staff needs to focus on your behalf and work with property owners and see if there's interest. And that way, it avoids us talking in an open meeting, saying, we're going to buy, uh, Jeannie Hooks's property, or we're thinking of building a park on Jeannie Hooks's property, but we don't yet own it yet, and nor have we spoken with Jeannie Hooks about her level of interest. So we would not want to create that type of hardship or frustration. Now, it could be counter, it could be a positive thing for some people in our community that, oh, the town's interested in my property, that's great, let me sell it to the town. Not everybody sees it that way, and from what I've experienced, it could go either way. So to avoid that, but to still give us some understanding of what your interest is, a hot map, a radial map, that just expresses general areas in Mooresville, will provide us what we need to know and will also provide us with a great deal of flexibility. This property owner in this area might not want to sell yet, but this property over here in this general area might be of interest, and we can still accomplish what you're looking for in the area. Does that explain?
I guess I just want to, I'm leaning towards a wider net, although for the town center, I understand the area of interest is in with the town center.
Town center.
But for other uses, I would think that areas of interest might be limiting rather than enabling. Um, but that's just a thought. I think I'd like to recognize Councilmember Garamella and then Councilmember Robati for comments.
Uh, ta- thanks, Jeannie, for bringing that, uh, topic, because that was always back of my mind, you know? I was literally waiting for this policy, because every time we have a rezoning, every time we have something, we kind of, uh, sitting on the dice, start talking about, um, how about we put this, you know, how about we put that? You know, we, we just don't own any of those lands, and it would be, um, good to also know is, uh, on the earlier top sections, you said eminent domain. What can be an eminent domain? What cannot be an eminent domain? Might be, you know, Frank and helpers explain, like, can we do an eminent domain on a, on a park? Can we do it? I know roads, uh, you can do it, because that's what we have done it in the past. Uh, so it would be good for us to have a general broad understanding of it, um, and, um, kind of have more of these sessions, you know, about what our interests are and what are the available parcels in a closed session, so that at least you can freely talk, um, and, you know, it's not giving heartburn or basically flagging, um, in fact, could jeopardize by, you know, the contracts or the people, if you are think, thinking of certain area to go for, they'll just increase their price. You know, that's, that's one thing where the school system is pretty good, um, they know exactly what they want, when they want, they'll just get it, they don't ha- ask a second person there. So in the same way, I think we have to learn our lessons to ensure that if there are certain areas that we commonly come across, um, and the staff is, uh, continuously looking after this, you know, then bring it, um, and then let's talk on the closed session, and not put every, uh, rezoning under the lens of a school or a, a park, because that's just not a, uh, you know, a discussion to have it then. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Robati?
Um, I'm just wondering about this, the idea of, in the first paragraph here in section four, um, it seems to me that if you, if you update these maps annually, aren't we going to miss a lot of opportunities? I mean, stuff comes up for sale and then gets sold, and like, I feel like there's, like, we might miss it if we're only going out once a year and surveying what's available, you know?
I think that's something that staff can keep tabs on, uh, so, so my interest is working with our GIS manager to prepare this hot zone map and with Brad West, who, who understands land use. It's also important, when you're thinking of purchasing land and you want it for green space or a park, you do want to know what uses are around this area, because it may, may work well and it may not work well, so it's also important to look at that. Um, I think it's something that, that staff can update fairly easy on an annual basis, and, and it, and it makes it even more important not to make it parcel-specific and more area, what's the general area of interest that, that staff can look at. Um, I'm not seeing any hurdles just yet, but that could come to fruition, that, that we could have some hurdles, and we'll certainly work through them, uh, as they come up. I think it's important for, you know, allow staff to put a map in front of you to get a feel for what it looks like first, and then we can take it from there. Because I think talking about it hypothetically, you don't quite have the picture that Jeannie has in her head, or Rodney, our GIS, um, specialist has in his head, to be able to effectively accomplish this. So as a, as a, a product, let us put that together, because it is an important, critical next step, and see what that looks and feels like, and it could change or adjust, and we could, um, address questions that, that you brought up. Very good question.
And, and I, I think I can, um, help. It's not the update of this map that will keep us aware of what parcels are on the market, uh, or that are, are in movement. That there are services, and in fact, we, we look at those. For example, it is, is one of the ways we identify potential locations for a senior center. It's how we located where our Parks and Rec offices could be. Now, that's, that's actually for buildings, but land is also a part of some of those services. And we also could employ uses of brokers, et cetera, that, um, would help us identify those parcels. So the update of the map is, is another component of that. It wouldn't be what we use as the regular tool to monitor traffic of property.
So, so the data is actually coming from Wake County, so anytime you transfer a deed or do something that changes ownership of a property, it actually comes across in the, the GIS data that we utilize to build these maps. So we would get a flag, uh, indicator of some sort in Wake County's data that would allow us to say, okay, something's changed on these properties, this group of properties, what, what do we need to do that might adjust a map somewhere? Just to help you understand what data we utilize comes effectively from Wake County and is updated as parcels and deeds change.
Okay. Um, I want to just piggyback, having heard all that, to what Councilmember Robati was saying, that annually made me a little nervous at first, too, but it sounds like, once we have a map in front of us, we'll have a better understanding of what it gets us, and whether or not we'd like to see it refreshed quarterly or something like that. So I'd be very interested in revisiting that after we take a look at that map, um, to make sure that we are staying current, and I'm glad that, to hear that we do have services that are always keeping an eye out. I hate to think that a staff member is spending full-time doing this, and when the town manager mentioned a broker, I am very much in favor of having someone out there, um, on our behalf, doing that as more of a full-time job, so we're not pulling staff away, um, because they're very busy doing other things. So I'd be very interested in, um, having, you mentioned appraisers later on, and having a number of them. If we could have a number of brokers also looking out on our behalf with these 10 items or general hot map areas, um, anything that we can do to cast a wider net, um, so that more opportunities can be brought to us, uh, because if we don't know about it, we can't scoop it up before it's too late. So those are just general thoughts in section four.
Any other comments? Because before I move us forward to the next section, that's a little more meatier.
Let's get to the meat.
All right, so section five is really process. This is where you're giving staff more latitude than maybe, uh, or you're spelling out very clearly the authorization to the town manager and/or his or her designee, uh, to perform on your behalf, certain things. So we break this down by land acquisition, um, and ownership and use and management, and of course, the sale and disposition. Um, it's important, when you have a land acquisition policy, you also address some of these other things, not just purchasing of land, but you may find that a public purpose is served better in the hands of a partnership with a private entity that gets you that public asset. asset. So you want to be able to divest yourself or dispose of it. Other things is you want to be able to make sure your relationship of ownership or management of real property, if you're working with public-private partnerships, that you have certain abilities or expectations of staff, that they bring you certain information. But the meat of it is your land acquisitions section. That provides a framework that staff would work within. And the difference here is, because you're establishing an areas of interest map, you're telling us what you value, what your goals are, what we need to work towards. You're providing us with really areas that we need to focus on in the community to bring these to fruition. You're giving us those high-level priorities, and we're going to work these land purchases through the forecasting of a CIP tool. You're giving staff with this particular section the latitude to reach out to those property owners, and that's something a little different than maybe what we've done in the past, where we've had to come to council first, explore what your level of interest was in some cases, and that takes time. With this policy, you're giving a greater degree of flexibility to staff with a framework to perform on your behalf, to investigate interest, levels of interest with private property owners or public-private partnerships, and then bring you findings. Does it measure up to the public purpose standard? Does it align with your areas of interest? Is it going to further the accomplishment or fulfillment of an existing capital investment project concept? Does it allow you to further explore opportunities for greater degrees of open space that are outlined in your Parks and Rec Master Plan? A specific goal of certain number of acres that you should have. So this gives those, that framework to work within and some flexibility, but it gives that structure, those burdens that we need to work within. So I'll pause there.
Councilmember Rabadi?
Yeah, I'm 100% fine with empowering staff. I love every bullet point, right up until the last one. The town may acquire properties by means of eminent domain. I think it should be our policy that we will not do that. I think, I object to that on every possible level, moral, philosophical. I, yeah, that's what I have to say about that. I don't think that we should put in a policy that we're willing to do that.
And we did that...
I'd support striking that. Councilmember Garamella, go ahead.
No, I think that is important, because on the type of use, if we didn't do eminent domain, we would not be having McCrimmon bypassed, too. We would never get it. You know, if we didn't do an eminent domain, we would not have the Parkside Elementary. So certain things are important for it, so it is good to have that. We did eminent domain also for Marshall Carpenter on some of the properties, when they were not ready to budge down.
So we could still do it if it wasn't part of the policy, though, correct?
I'm sorry.
No, I meant to say...
It's an important tool. Councilmember Garamella, yes.
So if I could clarify, this bullet does not say that it's council's wishes to exercise your legal right and authority for eminent domain. It doesn't say that. What it does say is that town staff must come to council and ask the question. And I'd say this could be one of those that could be measured on a case-by-case basis, because as Councilmember Garamella is indicating, there are times in which you've exhausted all means to get to where you need, and you need a road. And in order to get that road, you have the legal authority to exercise this eminent domain statute and acquire what you need in order for the greater good of the community as a whole. This bullet does not give us carte blanche to move on your behalf, to even have those conversations unless we bring it to you and you direct us to do so. So it's a good thing to have in a policy that tells staff specifically, when it comes to these cases, you have to touch base with council first in closed session. That's the purpose of why the bullet was added. I believe we have virtual member also.
Yep. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
Thank you. I understand Councilmember Rabadi's opposition to eminent domain. I am familiar with the New London Court case, where the town actually did eminent domain proceedings in order to acquire land that was later sold to a for-profit entity in the eye of public good. That's really not what we're doing. For the town of Mooresville, that's, it goes against a lot of our values. But what happens in North Carolina is that there are pieces of land that are owned by HOAs, or they're owned by multiple owners, and these legal agreements require that you have to have a vote of the owners.
I think we lost her.
No, she's frozen.
Wifi. Yeah. Sounds like she's sort of there.
Yeah, she's...
Buffering.
...in this policy. Can, did you not hear me? It was beautiful, by the way, what I said, whatever.
Say it again.
Did you hear the New London case?
Yes.
We got that much.
Okay, good, good. Okay. In North Carolina, we need to have the tool of eminent domain, because some parcels of land owned by homeowners associations or entities that have multiple ownership, sometimes they can't agree, because it's just not feasible to get enough votes to dispose of land that might be kind of attractive to the town to own for a park or some other public use. So by having that tool of eminent domain, in the option, we can help HOAs dispose of that through court proceedings that would allow us to take possession. But it's not something we would seize just to do eminent domain. There would have to be a really good reason why the land couldn't be transacted in any other manner.
I think that's why I added extreme and unusual circumstances, and that it come back to council, is to acknowledge the statute gives you that overarching authority, but it's what you're saying to us, is that that's important for this level of conversation.
We go to Mayor Protem, and then we'll go back to Ms. Rabadi.
So can, I totally get Councilmember Rabadi's, you know, not wanting to exercise eminent domain. I, it is something I would not want to do either. So I totally get that, and I don't, I don't, I don't, I only remember one time when we actually went through with eminent domain.
We've actually done it multiple times, even since I've been here, and I'd like to clarify a couple of things. It's not just taking property, and in the case of McCrimmon Parkway Extension, the filing of the paperwork alone was what we needed to, I'll say, compel the property owners to come to the table. It also doesn't mean we get to just pay whatever we want for the property. It requires us, and Frank's much better at this than I am, but we are required to put, I'll call it a fair market value in deposit, and then a court sort of adjudicates a proper value for the property. So it's not that we just take people's land. It's a process that in many ways allows the negotiation and discussions to start, and I think both Councilmember Garamella and Scroggins-Johnson mentioned it. It is sometimes necessary for right-of-ways and easements, or things like Parkside Elementary would not be here.
So can I make a suggestion? Instead of saying the town may acquire properties, what if, what if the wording was, "The town has the authority to acquire properties by means of eminent domain in accordance with general statute, but will only, but will only..."
Exercise this, right.
"...exercise this authority, you know, as directed by town's council in unusual and extraordinary situations." If there's nothing in here, it speaks nothing to how we have the authority. We have the authority. We could go out and do it tomorrow if we wanted to.
Regardless of what.
Yeah, but this doesn't grant our authority, anyway. This is irrelevant to our authority.
But what we're saying here is that we, if we even think about it, are only going to do it in unusual and extraordinary situations.
And that's what we need to hear.
Yes.
I like, I like Lou's wording for, otherwise, who would we do it tomorrow for any reason? Not extraordinary. Just acknowledging we have the authority, but we would only do it as a last resort.
That's right. That's right.
I personally would rather strike it completely. I don't think it gives us anything, and I think staff is pretty cognizant of our discomfort with generally doing it other than unusual circumstances.
Yeah, but this is not just for this staff. This is for the public. This is for...
Yeah, I don't want the public thinking about eminent domain.
Do you think the public is going to be more comfortable if we say that we can, like, if we put it in this policy, that we can practice eminent domain?
They, we already have that authority. They probably know, because based on situations out there, they, I mean, governments have the authority to exercise eminent domain. What we're saying is, this is how I, I'm reading it very differently. What it says to me is, it's a like, it's a last, the very last thing we're going to do, and we're only going to do it in extraordinary circumstances. I'm okay with, I would like, I'd like the public to know that. I'd like the citizens to know that. I'd like the business, the property owners, to know that, that this is not something we're going to exercise without really extraordinary...